I apologize and I'm interrupting, but I would like to call the meeting to the order. I'll give everybody a second. Thank you very much. And I'd like to start the meeting with a pledge allegiance to the flag. I apologize. Okay? Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Galanese.
Here.
Counselor Burrow.
Here.
Counselor Peeler.
Here.
Counselor Regan.
Here.
Counselor Camera.
Here.
Counselor Salamendra.
Here.
Mayor Valentino.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna start with a proclamation, but before we get into the proclamation, I would like to give Counselor Noon the floor, please.
I'd like to start this evening, letting people know that something I've been working on, and so has city staff, with trying to, in the spring, we'd like to get McDonough Park not renamed, but collaboratively renamed, with something to the effect of John Sloan Memorial Field at McDonough Park. So I've been in, working with Bob Omen quite a bit with that. He's gonna get some signs designed for the banners you walk in, as well as the scoreboard. And we, city staff has talked about a plaque honoring John's memory, as you all know, that John spent countless, I don't think any of us could count how much time John spent at McDonough Park, and to honor him. So in the spring, hopefully, we will, as Bob and I talked about, be able to have an opening, or a ceremony on opening day, to, you know, honor John for all his time spent there. So before I continue with my little spiel, I just ask for a moment of silence prior to the proclamation. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I wanna, I wanna take the opportunity to thank everyone that came out tonight to show their support for John. I think it really speaks to the impact he had in the 66 years of his life. The great ball player Hank Aaron once said, "In playing ball and in life, a person occasionally gets the opportunity to do something great. When that time comes, only two things matter: being prepared to seize the moment and having the courage to take your best swing." I think we can all agree that John was born prepared to seize the moment and never backed down from a challenge. He was the embodiment of this quote. Although I didn't know John very long, I really enjoyed getting to know him since he was appointed to the city council. He was a great man who loved Geneva and always had everyone's best interest at heart. I remember when we interviewed him for the appointment, I left saying to myself, "Where's this guy been? He's more qualified and knows more about government than just about any of us on council." We were lucky to have him serve, and we couldn't have found anyone better. During one of my first conversations with John, he was sharing his political experiences and mentioned that he was a part of Jimmy Carter's campaign in 1976. Now, that might come as a surprise to many of you, because as you know, John was a Republican, or as he liked to call himself, a Republican. And he spoke to me about that experience campaigning for Jimmy Carter and his experience at the inauguration. I happened to mention to him how much I enjoyed presidential history myself, and that I collect campaign memorabilia. In the next meeting, he showed up with a folder for me that volunteers were given, filled with things from the inauguration. That piece will always be one of my more valued items in my vast collection. I certainly appreciated his generosity. I've come to learn that was one of many qualities that John, that described John Sloan, whether it be providing pepper flakes to Mr. Cotillo at the mention he enjoyed them, offering a job to a man who just lost theirs at BJ's, devoting endless hours, that obviously took away from his family at times, to McDonough Park, calling Amy Hendricks even before her family did to congratulate her on her new position, or never losing sight of what mattered most to him, his family. I think it's safe to say that John leaves behind a legacy of great character, passion, and love, which will live in the hearts and minds of all those he left behind. People like John only come along once in a lifetime, and we were all better people for knowing him. As we continue to grieve his passing, he has left us with great memories, the good he did, and a lasting image. The image of a man sporting a Geneva Red Wings hat and T-shirt, beaming from ear to ear as he proudly talked about family, sports, and politics, riding across the ball field of life on a duct taped John Deere tractor. May God bless John Sloan, and may he live on in all those he impacted.
Thank you, Counselor. Could I have his family approach the podium, please? This is quite the crowd. This is John's four sisters and his two daughters. Whereas John Sloan was appointed to the Geneva City Council in January 2022 to replace John Pruder, the sixth ward counselor. And he planned to run for office in November of 2022, election pos, as well as possible run for mayor, God rest his soul, in the 2023 election. And when John, whereas, John was born and raised in the sixth ward and came to city council with experience in municipal government, including a term as mayor of Lyons. He believed in four basic principles for government: listen, communicate, respect, and compromise, which he utilized in his time on council to make Geneva a place to visit, work, and live. And whereas John was the general manager of the Geneva Red Wings baseball operation, where he could be seen at every game, John was also enjoyed volunteering as a coach, and an umpire, and being part of the community. And whereas, when he wasn't at a council meeting or at McDonough Park, John spent with his cherished time with his daughters, Giovanna and Chloe, who he shared his love of baseball and the Yankees with. John will be remembered as a man who was always willing to lend a helping hand, and someone devoted to his family and friends. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Steve Valentino, in my capacity as mayor of the city of Geneva, do hereby proclaim September 7, 2022, in the city of Geneva, as John Sloan Day. Be it further resolved that the city wishes to acknowledge John Sloan's advocacy on behalf of the residents and businesses of Geneva, to extend, to extend our sincere appreciation to his family for supporting him during this time working for the city of Geneva. And if we could just take a minute, I'd like to line us up for a quick picture, if we could, please. And anybody that's wearing one of these shirts that wants to come up and join in the picture more and more. Okay, based on our rules of order procedure, before we move forward, we need to make an amendment to our agenda. I'd like to add resolution number 41-2022. City council will approve a settlement. Do I have a motion? Counselor Peeler, second. Counselor Galanese. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Camera.
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra.
Aye.
Counselor Noon.
Aye.
Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burrow.
Aye.
Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Agenda is amended. Next is our supervisor update from Mr. Patropoulos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city management, and good citizens of Geneva. We'll start with, I'm sure many of you are aware, September is basically National Suicide Prevention Month. Let's read up on signs and symptoms, because a lot of the time, "Oh, I'm fine." Maybe they're not. It's a little more complex than that, but this is National Suicide Awareness Month, so let's see what we can do in that department. As far as county updates go, about the beginning of August, I was selected to be on a search committee for a new director of Veterans Services in Ontario County. We met last week and interviewed several candidates. Yes, I took the day off, but we have one particularly stellar candidate, which we are going to make an offer to. If the process works out, the board will vote on that individual in October. That individual will also appoint a veteran service assistant to fill the third vacancy that we have at the Veterans Service Agency. So if there are any veterans in the House, if you need any guidance on that, let me know. Otherwise, you can find the Veterans Service Agency at the county complex building in Cananda, or Hopewell, actually, yes. Okay, dates and things to do. There is a blood drive on the 22nd of September, which will be held at the county complex, 3019 County Complex Drive, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There is also, this may be a first, first I've heard of it, there is a mattress collection event. I know my rounds of Ward 6, I've seen mattresses stacked up on porches and what have you. We'll need to get the word out for this. It's basically, one can register either in Geneva or in Canandaigua. It's the town of Geneva that's collecting them, so that's pretty close by. Registration for that event was, basically goes from September 1st to September 22nd. Check the county website for more details. I will get an email to the city clerk if I have, do you already have that? Excellent. So hopefully, everybody will get the word on that. I brought some postcards, which are on that table over there. I bid everybody, look at them and take one. It's a survey the county is doing. They're asking for citizen, citizens to take the survey, input on community programs, social services, that sort of thing. I did the survey right before I came. It takes about three minutes. It's got a QR code. City clerk has posters that will hopefully be on the city website as well. I urge all of you to take that survey. The county will be looking at the information that comes back. It's all confidential. So nobody's gonna single you out or anything like that, but it is important, because we are trying to do something to better all of our services. And that pretty much, oh, one last thing, and I say this every time I'm here, the county is still hiring. Now, I know we may have, I don't really know the number of unemployed here, but a lot of entry-level jobs that actually pay pretty decently. Some are competitive, many are not. So if any of you know anyone that just graduated high school, isn't going to college, and doesn't have anything to do, I urge you to encourage them to go to the county website and have a look at what's out there. It's full-time, part-time, just about everything out there. For those that you might know that are majoring in, say, social work, the county is definitely looking in that department, or looking corrections officers, just about everything you can imagine. So I do urge you to talk to your constituents, talk to your friends and neighbors, you know, send them to the county website. So a lot of listings there. Unless anyone has any questions, that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Supervisor. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda is a presentation, and that's by Ann Hoyt for the Green Committee.
Thank you for letting me do this presentation and talk about the park. First, I want to say that I used to live in Lyons, and I remember when John opened that restaurant on Canal Street, and I was like, "Who is this guy?" And it was a really great local restaurant, and it was a wonderful kind of gathering place for people in the community. And then we lived there when he was mayor. He was such a civic-minded person, which I really appreciate. So I'm sorry for your loss. So thanks very much for letting me talk about the park. We're gonna try and fly through these slides pretty quickly. First, your park was installed in 2014, 2015 by Fisher Associates out of Rochester. It was designed by Mark Bayer, landscape architect and home builder. The design called for...
Clerk. Any help, IT?
Click, right click. Point to that. Click.
There you go.
Probably needs batteries. Okay, so it's, the park consists of these blocks of plants, mostly shrubs. Thanks. Mostly shrubs and grasses that have a specific palette of russets, purples, and golds. Golds. The shrubs in the park, these are the shrubs. They're all native species. They're extremely hardy, well-suited to the harsh conditions at the lakefront. These are the perennialists. Joe Pudwee. Up in the left-hand corner is Black-Eyed Susan. Help. Click. And there's two species of switchgrass, plus a prairie drop seed. Again, native species, extremely hardy, well-suited to the lakefront. There is only three species at the lakefront that aren't native. On the left are some yellow daylilies. On the right is a purple cabment, and... Oops. There's beetros, as you can see on the bank right. That's very hardy, all these things. So the Green Committee got involved in the park in 2020. That's a February 2020 newspaper. We were concerned because of stamping issues. DPW had, it was using mostly spraying to manage the park. So in June 2020, council adopted a partial ban on the use of synthetic pesticides at the park. We all know the results. The stamping issues weren't resolved. There was a hiring freeze. The city lost its summer interns. And there was a six-week drought. So the weeds basically took over. In April of 2021, four of us surveyed the park. That's my daughter, who has a master's in landscape architecture. Sean Rule, who did the plantings at the gazebo. Jim Norwalk, who's chair of the tree committee. And we basically looked, click, click. 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 At all the places where plants had been lost and did an inventory of the losses. Click. In the summer of 2021, we started the Weeding Wednesday program and the Adopt a Bed program. And we started welcoming groups that came to the park to volunteer for a day. Click. We also brought in the Hobart Williams Smith Day of Service students. They come on in April, August, and October every year and work at the park. More community groups. We also started in the summer of '21, collaborating with Geneva Blueprints Summer Youth Employment Program, which is funded by Workforce Development. They weeded. And we continued that collaboration this summer. These kids are, um, Dolly Jesusman and Ezekiel Streeter, Jermaine Bowles, and Louis Alvarez. So these guys weeded, but they also took pictures of the weeds and used a University of California app to identify them. We met at the library, where they researched the weeds and created this weeding guide for the lakefront with 24 different species identified. So we ranked them by high, medium, to low priority. And council has been asking for some guidance on where it might be permissible to spray herbicides. And we feel that the plants that we identify as high priority would be appropriate. However, you have to be careful about spraying. For example, Tree of Heaven, which is host to the spot, and Lanternfly, which is a great concern to New York right now. Can, it's, it, spraying is ineffective. You have to cut off the trunk and paint it with an herbicide. Hedge bindweed is all through the park. It's really a problem. But it's so entwined in the plants, you wanna say, that you can't spray. So you have to find a little patch to spray. These thistles would be good things to spray. They can be controlled through spraying. They're pretty, I, we think spraying would be effective. The medium and low items, those are things that are not really big problems, that weeders can address. So the other project we did this summer was, Blueprint received $1,000 from Geneva Community Projects to purchase replacement plants for the park. So we identified two sites for replacement plants. The Lakefront Hotel with this bare patch, and bare patches on either side of these benches, just south of the Blue Star Memorial. The kids looked at the park's original plan and determined what was missing from these sites. And I learned how to scale, filled in the plants with designer things, and drew up a plant list of what's missing. They also identified two high-visibility sites at the park. One of them is the shade structure planters, which were installed after the park was designed. So there's been no design for those planters. The kids' research plans found perennialists. They're very hardy. It's a mixture of native and non-native things that'll be colorful. So they did that with the shade structures. Also, the other high-visibility site is the I Heart New York sign, which was designed in the original park plan. But the I Heart New York sign wasn't there yet, and the original design was very low-key, just had some shrubs and grasses. So the kids moved in, decided to move in, and some of the more colorful plants from the rest of the park, like the Russian sage and the roses. And they've developed this plan for that bed. So we submitted this, these orders, these are the vendors we're working with. We have a delivery date for last week of September, and an installation day of October 1st. We need volunteer gardeners. We need mulch. We like some new soil for the shade structure planters. And we need water for the new plantings. Now, the hotel has promised to water its beds. The I Heart New York bed is easy to water, because there's always, the shade structures and the beds by benches have, can only be reached by a water vehicle. So we need the city's water vehicle to be working. Going forward, we think the city should provide the funds to hire a gardener to maintain the park. And that person who we hire should have a pesticide applicator license, or you should pay for that training. So when, and if you do spray, it's done by someone with the knowledge of the park and who knows how to address our weed issues. Also, we need to have reliable watering at the park. And finally, we've got some issues at the I Heart New York sign. This is the condition it was in, in 2021 when we started working at the park. That's five years' worth of seaweed that washed up. And we've been chipping away at that ever since. We get the Hobart Williams Smith students three times a year to clear that out. But if the city would just come in after the kids have cleaned it and power wash off the stuff they can't get, that would be wonderful. You still have weeds, so you need to hire somebody who's knowledgeable, who can determine the best strategies for getting rid of weeds. You've got a bioswale that's part of the park plan. That Hobart Williams Smith has been contributing plants to establish this bioswale for the last two years. They've used students to install plants there. It's a six-foot buffer on both banks of the creek. It was mowed in, right before the garlic fest, I think because nobody really realized that it's supposed to be grasses there and plants. I think because nobody really realized that it's supposed to be grasses there and plants. Um, not on. So um, it's supposed to be a buffer to keep runoff from going into the creek. You still have plenty of plants, places where you need some replacement plants. The left hand side is at the Castle Street entrance. The person who adopted that bed is keeping it weeded, but you need replacement plants to make it look good. Um, and that's just another example on right. Uh, so my final message to you is the park is really an asset to the city, it's a beautiful park. The plan is really sort of fully realized, it just needs some attention. So I'd like it if council would set aside the money to purchase plants, not a lot of money, but a little every year. And to make those plants replacements for what's in the original park plan. And last, to resist the offers of well-meaning people who want to add plants that don't conform with this park plan. It's a very coherent design, it's a beautiful design. And you need to sort of stick by that plan. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you and for your presentation and all your efforts. Thank you. Next on our agenda are two updates, the um, DRI update and the foundry update, brought to us by our city clerk, Laurie.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilors, and good evening. On behalf of the DPW, our consultant Barton and the Judas and our contractor Nardozzi Construction, we want to please thank all residents, business owners and visitors for their continued patience while the DRI project continues to progress. Work completed to date, as of the last progress meeting, which was held Thursday, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, the contractor has used eighty nine percent of the contract time and has completed sixty two percent of the proposed work. The current pay estimate number eleven was dated August twenty thirty two and completed work paid to date was six point three five million out of ten point one million dollars. The current contract's contract substantial completion date is at end of October twenty twenty two. The contractor has submitted requests for contract extensions of time, which are being reviewed. For the upcoming work schedule, the current contract one, five and twenty corridor phase, that phase is in phase one C. The contractor is working on the westbound lanes of Route five and twenty. Work continues on storm sewer upgrades, underground electrical work, granite curbing and cycle track grading. Please note, be advised that night work is part of the Phase One C Work Zone Traffic Control Plan. The contractor is expected to utilize an approved short-term detour for planned nighttime asphalt milling and hot mix paving. We currently do not have anticipated schedule for the night work. The current contract two, Streetscape and Five Points, is in Phase Two C. Work continues on finalizing all decorative features, landscaping, brick pavers, sidewalk signage and green infrastructure along Castle and Exchange. Concrete footers have been installed for the Bezuto Center rainwater collection system. Final traffic signal work remains to be completed. Some concerns are with the Bezuto electric, electrical conflicts being reviewed and electrical subcontractor material delays, short light outage, streetlight outages are being investigated. And that's it for that one. Did you want me to do the foundry next?
Yep. Yeah, I kind of lumped them together, Laurie. I threw your curve ball there.
Sorry. Okay. So for remedial design, the New York State DEC's engineering contractor issued the remedial design plans for Genesee Park and continued to coordinate with the city DPW regarding proposed park enhancements to be installed after remediation. Design of park enhancements by the city is proceeding concurrently with the DEC's work. See additional details. Design activities continue for all other remaining properties south of Lewis Street. Remaining structural inspections will be completed this fall. Remediation of these properties is expected to be completed in twenty twenty three. For remedial construction, all properties located on Exchange, Wadsworth and Middle Streets, north of Middle Street, excavation is complete and restoration is substantially complete at all properties. Remaining restoration items will be completed this fall with the exception of some plants and trees that will be installed in twenty twenty three. As noted above, remedial construction work at Genesee Park is expected to begin shortly with removal of the public sidewalk along Genesee Street, while the sidewalk through the middle of the park remains open. Excavation of the park inside the fence is expected to begin in late September after restoration of the exterior public sidewalk is completed. DEC's portion of the restoration of the park is anticipated to be substantially completed in early November twenty twenty two. Other work south of Lewis Street, along Genesee Street and at St. Peter's Church will be performed concurrently with work at Genesee Park, beginning in September or October. And that's it.
Thank you. Counsel Regan.
Um, I don't know who to ask this to, but I'm curious about the design of Genesee Park. We saw a sketch of that with some great ideas and I really don't know what's in operation now. If perhaps um, city manager can address that. Thank you.
Maybe I said perhaps. Perhaps. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the final design will be. I know that we will have um, the report related to multiple designs coming in, probably in the coming weeks. So once we have that, we'll be able to share.
Great, thank you.
Next on the agenda is consideration of meeting minutes for the August third meeting. I need a motion, Counsel Galanese, second by Counsel Noon. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burrow.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler. Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Camera. Counselor Salamendra.
abstain.
Counselor Noon. Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next on the agenda is public comment. And first on my list is Maria, or excuse me, Marie Jessica Gelati.
My husband asked me to read this today. Um, so this, this is what he wrote.
Can I get you closer to the mic? There you go.
Is that okay? All right. My name is Peter Gelati. I have another business commitment.
Yeah, is, is a, is a green light on?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. You gotta get closer then.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go nice and slow for us too.
All right. Um, I have a um, business commitment that prevents me from addressing the council in person tonight, but asks that the following be read. I have lived in Ward Four my entire life. I am a business owner in the city of Geneva now and in the past. I'm a proud grandfather of three grandchildren that visit our house regularly. My street is the home of families that look out for each other, just like many neighborhoods in Geneva. And the thought of any house fire is frightening. I am a proud member of the Fire Department of Geneva and it's a volunteer fire department, a volunteer fireman. Um, as firefighters, we cannot entertain let just let it burn approach when answering a call. That is not what we are trained to do. We are trained to do everything in our power to protect your property, your family and your um, home. Like my fellow professionals and volunteer brothers and sisters, I am dedicated to proudly serve. Peter Gelati, Volunteer Firefighter seven seven seven, Nestor Hoes, the City of Geneva Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next on my list is Daniel Bullock, who's requested five minutes.
Yo, um, I'm here tonight to uh, petition you all to let Nardozzi do garbage in Geneva because I need a dumpster and I need a dumpster really bad because Mr. Brian Kelly, um, because sometimes the fire department comes and puts out a cooking fire in your yard because some people like to use the authorities like their personal servant, especially like preachers who like, you know, hey, you're calling the people who killed your Christ. Okay, anyways, you keep pointing guns at people in Geneva, they're gonna go off. So stop calling the police on people, okay? So uh, another form of tyranny here, Mr. Brian Kelly, he didn't like the fact that I couldn't complete my project because I can't get a dumpster. So he changed the time of my completion project from uh, May tenth of twenty twenty three to, let's see, September twenty third to twenty twenty two. Now that's some tyranny there when some laminate bureaucrat, unelected guy can walk in your property like the sheriff.
Can you bring it down, can you bring it down a level?
With uh, like, like the, a ring from the judge. You know, people can roll up in your property and freaking, and tell you what to do and then they can tell you, I don't like how you're doing it, you have to do it now. So is there any legal reason for this change of timeline? And it's not for safety because it also says, and properly disposed of. Now this is some BS, okay? And I don't, I'm sorry, you know, like my tone, but I'm trying to be fast of time, okay? So I don't like, I'm sorry, sorry to offend you in the room, in the court. Okay, I don't, I guess my tone isn't acceptable. Like, but you know what? Cops standing at my driveway, just staring at me while I'm surrounded by firemen and officials in my way, in my property, telling me what to do, that ain't acceptable either. And you know what? It's kind of BS. So as my counselor, I had the sense not to go into Brian Cal, Brian Kelly's office with this energy. So could you handle that for me? And I'd like a reason for this timeline change. Is that legal? What is the legality of this? Are you just harassing retired people? Passing my entire, my retired parents. And they're gonna do something uh, like uh, you know, remortgage the house to pay somebody to do this because they're afraid you're gonna find them. You know, that's how you harass people. That's how you harass poor people. That's how you harass working people. And another abuse of government is like, you know, why are you gonna take down all these trees in Genesee Park for no gosh dang reason? You know, and I saw a couple on the corner of Genesee like, you know, like with Sage, you know, like going over like, oh yeah, we want like a Victorian park. So everybody wants to use the government to do something for them or, or to, to call up and, and like take care of their dirty work. And you know, it's just all used to, you know, like, just, all right, please, I need this dumpster. I need to get this done. I've been waiting. I, I didn't want to pay double or triple to Cassell especially because they make money off everybody else dumping their stuff. It's BS, man. So you need, okay, okay. And uh, and uh, I'll, I'll, I'll send you these papers or whatever. I didn't go into his office, so y'all thank me for that. I came here instead and y'all gotta listen to this, so too bad. And you know, if this the gist in some of it, what earthly good can come of it?
Next on our agenda is David Linger.
Ms. Hendricks didn't know, Ms. Gerling's promise to me was to keep it informed, consulted, or at least give Bid a heads up before such a radical presentation came before council. I'm not pressing Bid anymore, but frankly, the first notice was to pay when I saw it. I asked the city council, work with this bid partner and other interested groups, such as the limited parking option, folks there downtown, people that are in the Holy Park Historic. Other urban folks in Geneva that don't have, don't have drivers. I asked you to consider that this proposal will affect parking for one hundred days. Storm emergencies most recently are what? Two emergencies a year, maybe three, for a total of five or six days total. What does that leave us? Ninety five days where the proposal is, have no parking. Where's the snow? Where's the issue for those ninety five days? This seems to be a waste of valuable public resource. What has been known? Has there been an outreach to the public? Has there been notices to sign up in the city for their work system? Has there been a discussion of reallocating the parking potential to HAD? Of this HAD. At HAD, when there's a slow emergency coming, to HAD. Hit the app and then off, come back and even, and start issuing tickets. Has there been an effort to give a reminder? So when a ticket is issued, also give a reminder to those folks that there is an option to get noticed, to learn about these things at a time. Frankly, none of these things have been done. All we have now is a draconian answer to a problem that doesn't exist. We need to find solutions, something with this community outreach. But we have to try that first before we have some excessive, frankly, unnecessary approaches that hurt downtown, hurt our urban community.
Next, I have Mr. Charles King. Next is Mr. John Brennan.
A great deal. A great deal of uh, negative consequences. But I would also like to suggest that the return to the old system is not a solution for any residents. It's a solution for the services that have to pave the streets. So I'd like to suggest a third method, if you will, and that is to appoint a committee, perhaps a couple of council people, somebody either current or former employee of the DPW that knows how it all works, someone from Bid, and I volunteer because it's my idea. And we form a committee with a deadline and we can possibly identify the, the difficulties with the current electronic system. In other words, if we could improve that, improve the signage, improve the signaling to, if you will, all of the residents of Geneva, maybe we can make that system work. It's not too late in the season. I would say perhaps if today is the seventh, maybe we could pick October twenty fifth as a deadline and report back to council and/or to the city manager, to Jovanuti, and see if we can't come up with some very real, very specific and not costly solutions. That's by, that's by two cents.
Thank you. Uh, last on my list is Mr. Tim Buckley.
I never thought I'd be here about talking about parking, but I'm talking about two different issues of parking. So uh, never I thought I'd be here talking about being able to park in front of my office after forty four years. Suddenly, there's gonna be a two hour limit. I'm wondering if the councils are gonna have code enforcement or the gentleman that goes around and marks the tires to come up to our neighborhood and patrol that and monitor that. Some observations over the years is, it's never been a problem before. I go back to Monaco's Grocery, Gary's Liquor Store, Floyd Norman's Beauty Salon, salon, on and on, and we've worked it out. Monaco's is doing very well to their credit. It's caused some congestion. I think a little more uh, enforcement is a sign between. I think a little more enforcement is a sign between pretty much across from Monocle's down to the corner. The people park there illegally, flagrantly. There's no tickets issued. It's a danger because people back out and then their car gets hit. They could park around the corner. My wife says, don't look for sympathy, meaning me. I have one parking space in my office. I have, excuse me, in my house at 128. I live Killy Corner from my office, so I parked my car in front of my office. I've done it for 44 years. Never been a problem. I've also come up with portable signs about three years ago, which cost me $500, but I was happy to do it because it's, I thought, maybe a partial solution to the problem. The signs are eight, 30 to five, only on weekdays. I take them in at night. They're very portable. And, you know, some people abide by their respect for my parking spots and some people don't, but it's better than having no availability at all. They're not open. My signs are not there on holidays. They're not there on weekends. They're not there during a legal holiday or obviously not there at night either. So it's been flexible. I have a neighbor down the street, a colleague, I might encourage him to do the same because his signs are embedded in the ground and they're, give the impression you can't park there at all. I'm not trying to single him out, but it seems like my sign worked pretty well. I think this, I'm asking the council, this table this that they went for 60 days. We could get the homeowners, the property owners and the tenants together with the city involvement, work out a compromise solution. I mean, it's kind of odd that you got to have two-hour parking at Poltony in Washington. I mean, it really is. I think it's well-intended. I know there's been some disagreement about people's rights to park there. I don't dispute it's the city's property, but it's an unusual situation and I don't think it needs a two-hour parking limit. My wife even gave the example, which I think is kind of humorous. Let's say I go to, they mark my tire at nine o'clock, right? So I go to the nursing home or some client I have to see at their house. And then I come back at, let's say, five to 10:00. And I park there. And then they come back at quarter after 10:00. They say, well, his car's been there since nine o'clock to 10:00, or 11:00, excuse me. Do I get a ticket for doing that? Am I going to be gone an hour and a half? So can I jump to the second subject? This is about the winter parking laws.
Well, you got to make it quick. Get to the limit.
Well, I favor the present situation. I thought the article in the paper was unfair, it's selective, and it shows a car that's snowbound, well, the car could have been snowbound under the old ordinance. You could have found that anywhere. You could have a picture of the enforcement of the new ordinance, how well it's worked on a typical emergency day, how many people have substantially complied with that, to their credit and to the city's credit. You could also have a picture showing when it's not a snow emergency day, how people can use the public streets for parking. And again, I think, I think it's 120 days if you count from December 1st to March 31st. And of that 120 days, it's either five or 10 days total that the emergency restrictions have gone into effect. So it's like it's not well-intended. It's been, we've crossed this bridge before. We've already discussed it. The council has voted on it. It's a modern way to communicate and to keep the city open for parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is mayor and council reports. And I'm going to start with our D, Councilor Salamandra.
If nothing.
Come around the tip, please, order, order. I'm going to start to my right, Council Regan.
Thank you, Mayor. We've heard a lot from the Green Committee tonight, and so I'm going to skip a few comments here. I do want to just stress that, you know, we've been getting criticisms about pet projects and things that don't affect the entire city. And these kinds of issues such as weeding, it's come to my attention that people consider a pet project of mine that, you know, and I should be more concerned about other issues. It just as a reminder, that was a, it was unanimous vote to try and address the synthetic chemicals that are being used across all city property, not just the lake. But, you know, in our case, we do have to worry about the lake as well. And working with, we've been working with Cornell AgriTech to get solutions for this. And you heard tonight, it was really a limited ban. We did decide you could get on very targeted situations where it would help get rid of a real problematic weed. We are, the provision is in there to allow that. And I think to proceed with caution on that and to be glad for the advice of a volunteer committee to provide information to our city department is quite a good thing that affects the health of the environment, the lake, and even things like tourism. So I just want to stress again that it's an important thing, I think, to all of the city. In addition to what you heard from our member Ann Hoyt, the Green Committee is hosting a native plant sale. There's a lot of talk of native plants in her presentation. On September 17th, from 9:00 to 11:00, it will be at the Welcome Center as part of the farmer's market. So come on down. There's three different nurseries represented there who can speak to you about trying to foster this kind of growth in your own yard. It is the best time really, in general, to plant in the fall for lots of good reasons. And this is an opportunity to pick up some good native plants to get started in your own little corner of the world.
Counsel, what's that date again?
It is the 17th, September 17th. That's a Saturday, and it's part of the farmer's market from 9:00 to 1:00. In addition, a group of the Green Committee members and a couple of people from the community took a fascinating field trip to Ithaca, to the Ryu Center. And it was pretty inspiring. You know, we went with the interest of diverting things from the landfill. But you could really go to a place like that for so many other reasons. They are offering jobs to basically underserved population, providing training for them, all kinds of services. They sell everything from electronics to a lot of housewares and lumber supplies, construction supplies. All of this that was pulled from projects are about to be thrown away. I can tell you that it lit a spark in the eyes of many of us as something that would be nice to have here in Geneva. And, you know, this would be a long-term project, but it's very inspiring to see something like that. The executive director, Diane Cohen, personally took us at multi-different sites to get a good feel for what they're up to there. Let's see. In a similar vein, there's another Free Stuff Day happening. That is another great way of diverting waste from the landfill. That's through the town of Geneva. It will be September 11th, this Sunday, from 10:00 or from, yeah, 10:00 to noon, you can drop off your things that you no longer want. They sort them, they put them in piles, almost like you have a shopping center up there, and then they open the doors at 12:00. And from 12:00 to 2:00, you can go pick up the things that you happen to have noticed that you'd like to own yourself. And then they take care of anything that's left over. Hopefully, there's not much left over. So that's a great program. I have to commend the town for all that they're up to in these kinds of efforts. Outside of the Green Committee, I was very proud to represent the city on the dedication of a plaque to the Apple Knockers. That was a drum and bugle corps that happened at the lakefront on April 20th. The plaque is down there now. You can see it. It's just a little bit between the, I can't help but call it the Ramada, the hotel and the visitors. I'll get to that someday. I know. It's there now. It was a great tribute and lots of people who played were there and played a little bit, played one of their famous songs. So it was quite a nice event. Let's see. I'm going to, I also just wanted to alert you to a project that will be happening on Linden Street. I believe we may be talking about 29 Linden even tonight or get an update on that. The idea began with Council Camera suggesting artwork be put in the windows. And I myself felt it would be great to see local art. I was thinking specifically of Arthur Dove with signage that may direct people to the Dove Building because that's a new tourism effort. Well, so I did approach Geneva, or Historic Geneva, and they have responded incredibly. It looks as though that the display currently up is going to be coming down. It's currently, formerly up is currently down, and a new one will be installed. So keep your eyes open. It will feature eight images by Rochester artists ranging from Arthur Dove to lesser-known. They're all from the 19th and 20th century. I believe all the images are of Geneva sites like St. Peter's Church, Poltony Circle, they call it. But, you know, just places that you will recognize that are artist renderings, paintings of these specific spots in the community. There's a lot of volunteers in going into this effort. On that particular day, Obert Williams Smith, their annual day of service, they'll come clean the windows, which is much needed, and help with the hanging. So keep your eyes out after that mid-September date, and you should be seeing some new things to cover up something none of us really want to be looking at.
Counsel, is it September or October?
September. Did I say October?
Well, the thing is, I was notified it was October 15.
Oh, well, I heard that, what I got today was that they're going to be installing it as part of the day of service, which I believe is September. I don't know. That's a date I had in mind.
I was just given an email by Mrs. Vaughn that it's October 15.
You could be correct. I think it was going up on the day of service, but maybe I had that date wrong. Anyway, keep your eyes open. I guess the only thing that I would also say is I'm planning with budget season coming up to have another town hall meeting, which, just to alert those in my ward, I'm looking for a spot. We can't go outside anymore. And it'll probably be October 4th, but more coming on that. So thank you very much.
Counsel Peeler.
Thank you. I just want to thank Anthony for all the work he did for the ceremony this morning. I appreciate that, really. I had the pleasure of working with John Sloan on the Jefferson Park revitalization project that we did for two days in a row. And I just hope and pray that the next counselor that we appoint or who is elected in Ward Six, I hope they're open to the next portion of that project that John and I worked on, which was going into Neaters and working on that, working on that baseball field as well. Both Jefferson and Neaters parks were very important to me growing up as I played Little League there for all of my youth. So thanks, Anthony. The Recreation Board met last month, and there are some, there's some good news. And trick-or-treating will be Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00. Based on what I think I heard Mr. Linger said, the new costume for the season is going to be a scare ted. So that's going to be a great costume. The pumpkin roll is going to be 10:15, October 15th, from 12:00 to 3:00 at Hildreth Hill. And if you don't know where the pumpkin roll is, it's at the Brook Street, Thomas Courts. It's very fun and you can smash a pumpkin. It's the only time you could smash a pumpkin and not get in big trouble. There'll be Halloween activities, window painting and pole decorating. And there will be our annual Touch a Truck event, which is going to be October 10th. And that's a wonderful event. Bring your kids, bring your family. There's food. You can climb fire trucks, take pictures in the bucket. It's just really great. There's going to be some big rigs there. We had kickball August 20th and August 27th, and that was very successful. And I hope they keep going with that. That's also bringing people into our parks because one of the things all our parks suffer from is neglect and vandalism. And the one thing that deters neglect and vandalism is use. So we can get people into those parks, the more, the better. Here's something big. So we've had a lot of problems with recreation and integration into the Geneva school system. A lot of kids come home and they don't know what's going on with the rec department. And as a parent with three kids in Geneva school system, I know that's objectively true. And it's not because of lack of trying, it's because it's often very difficult or it's, there's bureaucratic red tape to get that messaging into the school system and then back to the students. But yet, there's some activities that seem to be fast-tracked right to the kid's hand. They go home with lots of paperwork. So if you're a parent who's wondering why you don't see some certain events, but you see others, it's just because it's not even handed. So our new president, Joan Bernard, next month, and hopefully this gets followed through, is going to meet with the new superintendent and have a meeting about how we can get that communication worked out. Because if we don't have the support of our school systems and recreation, it's going to be an uphill battle, and I believe it should be a downhill battle as recreation improves all. And that is it for my council reports for recreation. I do want to say that one of the things that I've noticed since moving back to Geneva in 2009 and through representing my ward in Ward Two is Geneva has a track record. And I think we saw that with both the presentation that we saw today at the lakefront and with our D R I project and some smaller projects like the construction of bicentennial park. And we get a lot of funds to build great, beautiful things that are designed really nice. And in those projects, the sustainability and the manpower of keeping them beautiful is an afterthought. And it's not properly figured out, but we build them anyways. I just want to let the residents of Geneva and especially my ward know that I'm keeping an eye on that. One of the things I just heard today was that we've got 89% of the manpower hours used up for Nardozzi and 62% of the work has been done. Based on my notes, that we've risen 8% of manpower, but only risen 1% of labor in one month. Well, that's an interesting ratio. What was done with only 1%, but gobbled up 8% of the labor? So I hope, I want to really advise future councils and present councils to keep an eye on this as well as staff because we just can't afford to not have the foresight to let the beautiful things deteriorate. We don't, we can't afford it for our future, for our future generations, for our businesses. So that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Burl.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank Counselor Noon for really a wonderful proclamation for our friend, John Sloan. Since the pandemic, my family has lost about 18 friends and family due to death. And I added John Sloan to that list. I wear a necktie seven days a week and I pretty much have a necktie for every occasion. And when I woke up this morning, of course, I was thinking about my friend, John Sloan, and looked for all the baseball ties that I had in my closet and selected one called the Seventh Inning Stretch, which was purchased at Guards Cards Allen Neckwear. And it has the red team, Geneva Red Wings, versus the blue team, which I guess I would call the Brooklyn Dodgers. So I come from a baseball family. My mother grew up in New Jersey and was a Brooklyn Dodgers fan. And with all due respect to all of the baseball fans here, particularly the New York Yankees, she drilled into us with no unwavering thoughts back in the day when there were only 24 major league baseball teams, that we made sure that the New York Yankees were our 24th favorite It really doesn't matter what team you are on. I love the game of baseball. And thank you so much, Counselor Noon, for honoring John Sloan tonight. When I was sitting in the barber shop, thinking about getting brushed up for John's service, and we were talking in the barber shop about our friend. And life being as sacred as it is, and we are all around in God we trust, and we may believe that we are all of God's children. When I left When I left that barber shop, I just started to think, which is kind of like my new motto, in that you never know when your last haircut is going to be. So rest in peace, our friend, John Sloan. Thank you Supervisor Petropolis for the great update and Hoyt for the fantastic presentation on the Green Committee and the six people who came to the podium to be a voice of democracy tonight. Thank you, Jim, for mentioning the blood drive in Ontario County because we're all used to my rant and my passion for donating blood. And I'd like to make sure everyone has the opportunity to do that several times this month. You can only give once every 54 days. In Thursday, September 15th, it's very convenient to give at FLCC on Poltoni Street from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Tuesday on September 20th, you may donate a block away at the Presbyterian Church from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, the following day, the 21st, up at Geneva General Hospital from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. The Scamling Center at Poltoni Street, Thursday, September 29th from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. And just a little advance notice, if you want to make sure you're not late for the October council meeting, you can donate blood right here in Jordan Hall next week on October the 6th from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. Thank you for the counselors who approached me the other day and mentioned that they had donated blood. The Geneva BID, things to report there are longtime, stable and popular gift shop on Sonica Street, Earthly Possessions has moved their location over to the former frame shop for increased exposure and more retail area. We welcome Yvette and her business next door. I just hit a couple of bullet points here. I wasn't able to make the BID board meeting. Of course, we have a need for an additional maintenance employee, so we're hoping that we can fill that slot. We're in the planning stages for an October 10th Fall Fest in downtown Geneva. We hope to have the reconciliation of the financials for the Cruising Night and Garlic Festival, which were successfully pulled together in a three-week interval. The BID is quite enthusiastic about working with the new economic director when that comes to light. The BID is working on planning a board retreat, which is much overdue for next month. We have our usual steady concerns on maintenance of our 12 months of downtown with the increased demand for the DRI. We have concerns about looking at boat launch issues during weekend events. And of course, filling vacant storefronts, which is always on our mind. Hoping to get a program together on using some of those vacant storefronts to test retail pop-up operations to see how the demand would be for certain types of retail in our downtown. I wasn't able to attend the Shade Tree Committee. I'm not sure if Ken will have a report on that. But I'm happy to report that our nursery, which I believe is about two years old, we already have 165 trees that are ready to transplant in our city right of way. So that is just a huge success when we can buy a seedling for a very small cost and nurture that seedling to transplant height and so it can be safely put on our streets. Jim Norwalk and I, we delivered approximately $557 worth of firewood this past month. And I do want to give a shout out to my daughter, who was home for the summer, and she actually retailed and wholesaled firewood on the east side of Sonica Lake in Sampson to businesses and campers and brought in $332 and donated 100% of that to the city of Geneva. We, the Shade Tree Committee was in need of some tree stakes for the nursery. So out of that $557, we reimbursed Jim Norwalk and his gang $174 for tree stakes. So the donation for this month's bottom line is $383. The HTC did not meet and the College Livability Task Force, I'm not even sure if that organization is is still a, is still an entity. We haven't met, I don't think, in a couple of years, but I always report that, you know, we have not met and I don't know if that's just on a demand basis with the fire chief or police chief or the good folks at HWS. But that includes my report.
Counselor Noon.
For coming tonight and thanks for hanging around. Don't feel obligated, though. But thank you. And thanks for for all the counselors who also showed their support for for Counselor Sloan and and thank, you know, thank you, God, for sharing him with us. And outside of the the work that is being done with Bob Omen in regard to McDonough Park, I just wanted to point out a few things from our retreat that unfortunately did not get highlighted in the news. It was some negativity that was highlighted instead. But we gave the direction to staff, particularly our city manager, to focus on zoning, getting that across the board. As many of you may remember, we started that a couple of years ago and unfortunately that's been pretty stagnant. So we've kind of instructed city staff to to try to get that across the finish line. So hopefully we'll be doing that soon, working on the DRI completion as as well as the execution of the overall plan. Lakefront enhancement, and I brought that up. And and what I mean by lakefront enhancement is we have to do something with the lake and I don't mean by building buildings, but we need to give people a reason to come to the lake other than to just sit. You know, I think it would be a great idea to put up some pavilions, which shouldn't cost very much with some picnic tables, little grills, very similar to Kershaw Park, where people can come and enjoy the green space even more. Maybe a a public beach, which I'm a very strong advocate for, and I'd like to see that implemented, as well as kayak rental, canoe rental. It would also be great to see food trucks come down there on on the weekends and and whatnot, so people have access to that and and give the lakefront a true staying power. And instead of just kind of a passing through, coming down to visit the the visitor center, which is absolutely wonderful and attracts people from all over the the country as well as the world, but give them something more to that, to our lake space for for people to enjoy. We also talked about upgrading our waste system, which we'll address a little bit tonight. Beautification, which covers a whole host of things, including the green space being constructed as part of the new Five and Twenty project, as well as the DRI. And more importantly, connected to beautification is is maintaining that beautification as well as our, addressing our infrastructure needs. So just wanted to let the public be aware of those were the things that we, that was the actual purpose of our retreat. And and that's what I think the public should know, that that's what we're going to start working on. Also, the budget rollout is on September 21st. With that said, I I will be holding a Town Hall of the Sons of Italy on on September 28th from 6 to 7. I'm still trying to to work that out in my head on on whether I want to construct that with wards four, five and six, or if I want to do groups of two, which then means I would start with wards five and six first and begin to, that meeting is not going to be about me or this council. I'd like to hear from the public and what their budget priorities would be and what we can do to ensure that the public's needs are being met. So I I will definitely put information together. More on that as the time draws near on our city website, as well as out to the Finger Lakes Times. And also a reminder, this Sunday is the 21st anniversary of 9/11. I was a ninth grader at the time and I remember my earth science teacher, who usually was a clown and always made us laugh, so it was really hard to take him serious. But he came into our classroom and informed us that we had just been bombed. And we didn't really take him serious at first. And then we quickly learned the news. And I think that's a day that we should always remember. So I would encourage everyone to come down to the Long Pier at at 10 a.m. on Sunday to take part in that ceremony. And I would encourage you to bring the young folk who weren't around during that time so they may pass on the importance of this day. And and I know regardless of what grade I've ever taught, whether it be first grade, second grade, or or all the way up through middle school, I've always found some way to work that into our lesson around 9/11 because I think it's super important to teach people on why that day is so important and why we should never forget those who passed away. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Kamau.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I only have a few things. I'm going to save one thing for our discussion on the trash, so so that's an item that was in my packet for that. You you may all know that I'm involved with this Railroad Integration Committee, Lakefront Railroad Integration Committee. It's been delayed, but as as I've reported, we have this grant from the Genesee Transportation Council. And I have been informed by Tom Harvey, who's the Director of Ontario County Planning, that finally we're going to meet sometime around the end of this of September. And that'll be the first official meeting where we can start putting together the the RFP that will bring on the consultant that will assist us in writing the report. And a great part of that, we hope, will be of that report, will be how we can move the Finger Lakes Railroad rail yard either, you know, in into another location so that we can open up the sixth ward to the lakefront. Of course, you you all know that we've, you've heard about, you know, the survey that's been done or conducted in the town of Seneca related to the landfill, the Ontario County landfill, which is scheduled technically to be closed in 2028. All I'm doing is bringing this up, that we have to get on our toes here. I hope our supervisors at the county level are going to be on top of this and are going to develop, help us and help the county develop a plan for what goes in its place after 2028. Instead of a landfill or an extension, it would be a different kind of change. The landfill would close. We would still be able to take care of our waste. We'd recycle, we'd reduce and we'd reuse. We'd take the best of a lot of these other operations, like the one that Jan referred to down in Ithaca. And I think that we have plenty of time for the board of supervisors to come up with an articulate plan that's implementable and is feasible and is financially sound. So I just want to say that that's something I really will focus on in terms of being either helpful or a pain in the ass, depending on how things are going. One thing to let you know that we did about eight or nine years ago, we had some, I think the second of two landfill summits were done and they were convened at Hobart and Williams Smith Colleges. We had a lot of people come. And I think it's time for a landfill summit for this community and the region. At the end of this year, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation is supposed to finish the draft of the New York State Beyond Waste Plan. And so we're hoping it's going to be a very innovative and plan that's going to help us reduce the reliability, you know, the reliance on mega landfills, of which we have two. We're we're sandwiched in between it, these two. And so we'll all have to, as a community, be ready to comment because typically what happens is they're going to send it out, it'll be a draft, they'll be looking for public comment. And I hope all of us will weigh in as city counselors, as city managers, as supervisors and as the public and point and 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 take it apart where it's really, you know, not completely on on the right track. So and I think that's a good way, that's a good basis for having a landfill summit, is to really try to bring in as much public input as we can and to focus that back on the state so that we're making an impression on the DEC. Again, I'd still, I'm not asking for it tonight, but I still want to see if we can get a report on our derelict properties, the two, well, the three that really stick out to me. Humbert Street at the south end, the property that's got, I think, belongs to the Quatera family. It's got the trees growing out of the back and the roof is about to cave in. And it is a, it's a dangerous property. And I hope we can, you know, somehow speed its path towards demolition because it's it's not reclaimable. And right now it's an attractive nuisance and it could be a danger to anybody that goes into it. The other one at 408 South Main Street, it's the one that is perennially there, kind of our, you know, our bad, it's our carbuncle on the south gateway to the city. It's it's a horrible place and for some reason, it just never gets addressed. Of course, 29 Linden Streets on Linden Street, we've been trying to pretty it up by putting artwork in it. And I don't think if 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 we can get the dove work on those windows and it'll stay up, that's not as much of an emergency. So I hope staff and everybody can give us a report, maybe for the next meeting, on these other two properties and and where we are in that process. Shade Tree Committee, I I don't, I cannot remember, Tom. I I believe I was at one, but I don't think I, you know, it was sort of a touch base kind of thing. And I think that the Shade Tree Committee is doing great work. Planting all these trees at the wastewater treatment plant is saving, is going to save us a fortune over time. The the number, I don't know exactly what it is, but we have something like 1,700 Norway maples, which are, were planted a long time ago to help keep the city, you know, keep the city's urban forest up, but they're not the right tree for the urban environment we're in. And so they're all eventually going to have to come down. So the Shade Tree Committee is really doing something. It's going to, it's us giving our future residents in the city of Geneva a legacy and an urban environment that they'll be proud of and that'll shade them and that will beautify their, you know, their byways and everything else. So it's a, it's a very important thing. You can't get the immediate results, although the Shade Tree Committee does present and provide immediate results in in terms of focusing on problem areas and things like that. So and it's, it's run by people like Jim Norwalk and other scientists in this community who really know trees. And I'm envious of the fact that they know that so much about trees. I think trees are wonderful creatures in their own way. And so that's my report. I want, you know, I just, related to, you know, losing John, I just don't want to say that our path at our house is always to Wegmans has always been down Brook Street to Lyceum and then down Nursery over to Wegmans. And I've often seen John living his best life on his bike, either on his way to the stadium to McDonough or coming back from it, fit as a fiddle, you know, and just, I think, enjoying his life. And I think that spending a lot of time on a baseball diamond is is really great. So I I mourn the fact that he lost that, you know, life on his terms. And that's, that's all I have to say. I I think that's really, you know, sad that we lost him on it, you know, that this time. So that's about it. Thank you very much.
Counselor Galanese.
I'd like to thank the Sloan family for giving us the opportunity tonight to pay tribute to John and the wonderful life that I believe that he lived. to John and the wonderful life that I believe that he lived. Back a few years ago, the passing of, I'm not quite sure who it was, but this certain individual brought up the importance of two dates, which I thought were important at the time, but as I explained to you, you'll see different. So we think that the day that you're born is a significant date. We think that the day that you die is a significant date. They're actually the two shortest days of your life. The most important thing is the dash in between a date, and I believe that John fulfilled that dash better than anybody. He was a great man. He was a good friend of mine that I really got close to over time. The impact and mark that John has left on us all is permanent and will always be remembered. May be, may he rest in peace, and I know right now he's looking down on us all, getting a kick out of all this. At last, I just want to say to the Sloan and to Joanne family how deeply sorry I am and all that you're going through and have gone through. Thanks again for being here tonight and let, and I'll celebrate with you. I could go on and on about John, and we hear stories, you know, him riding his bike. I often wonder if the bike has more miles than his legs on it, because every time I see him, he's walking the bike. You know, it was tough with him not sitting right here tonight. I think that he did, in a short period of time, a very good job, and he will be certainly missed by me. And Anthony, great job. Thank you.
Okay. So we've barely scratched our agenda. Can you, can you imagine how your father or your brother actually enjoyed this and look forward to doing more of it? Yes. And honestly, we appreciate you being here, but you do not have to tough this one out if you want, we'll leave you more than well. That's good. Look out, she's going to run for office. I can, I can see it now. The legacy might continue. So quickly, I want to also thank the city manager and staff for our folks retreat. We were established priorities for 2023. I think that was incredibly important, not only for this council to gain the focus on how we want things to move forward, but for the city manager and staff to understand what the priorities of this council are moving forward. And hopefully, those priorities that we've presented are priorities that represent our constituents. That's, that was our goal. The, the LDC, the IDA, and the BID, I'm always, I'm just continually encouraged about how they're collaborating together. So I, you know, in my many years of those three organizations being in the City of Geneva, I've never seen them work so much together. So I'm just pleased that that, and the focus, what they're working together for is for the Betterment of Geneva Economic Development Downtown Revitalization. The LDC did meet today, and there was a great discussion. I'll give you one guess what it was about. Weeds, beautification, it's a popular topic. But they're not just talking about it. The BID and the LDC are actually trying to come up with some action plans, and I compliment the action plans that are being proposed. So it's not just throwing money at a problem, it's not just throwing another unit of labor, labor at the problem, it's not putting a further burden on the city or the DPW, it's trying to create a more creative solution to our downtown and to our lakefront to keep that beautiful. So it's a topic of discussion that comes into my ear very often, not only from I like or I don't like what you're doing, to downtown, to the DRI, to the lakefront, but things you could do better, things that would be more long-term solutions. I've had people tell me how to take care of the weeds, especially around the base of the trees, and some really good ideas are out there, and we just need to kind of bring those ideas to the forefront and be able to leverage them to make, to make the job a lot easier, because we all appreciate the City of Geneva and our lakefront, and we're very proud of it. Some of us feel we're much better than any other Finger Lakes in the region, so, and me, me in particular. Counselor Noon also did mention the 9/11 ceremony, that 10:00 a.m. Sunday, please attend. There's more information on our website if you'd like to know more about it, and I hope to see you there attending on that Sunday. City Manager, your report.
Okay. I think you guys took a lot of my reports, so that makes it easier. I do want to say thank you to the family. As Anthony mentioned, John called me immediately after council was notified that we had negotiated my offer. I was riding my lawnmower and stopped, and he's like, oh, I didn't mean to bother you with that. Then I understood why, definitely shared a lot of time with him. And he also, one of the other times that John reached out to me is after my father passed, and we were talking about him, and he said, wait, he liked the Raiders? He was a good man, wasn't he? So we had that in common, and, you know, that's something that I'll think about now. I am not a Raiders fan, but there's something special there. So thank you for coming tonight. I think they've encouraged you, you don't have to stay, but, you know, we're always looking for other public servants, so pass that on. A lot of what I am working on right now has to do with budget. Comptroller Newcomb and I are working on the 2023 budget. There are many areas that we're looking forward to examining further and expanding details on, but you're going to find your 2023 budget will look very similar to your current budgets with some slight modifications. It's a quick turnaround time for us. It will be 92 days, I think, when I present budget on September 21st for me and two months for Stephanie. So we're going to be looking at not sweeping changes or anything like that, but taking the priorities seriously and then really a maintenance of effort. The budget presentation will be held on September 21st, I believe, here at 6:00 p.m., Lori?
Yes.
Thank you. Other things, just so people are aware, staffing, the search for the Director of Planning and Economic Development is, remains active. We've received several applications at this point. They are coming in a little quicker in the last couple of days, and they are due by September 9th, and cover letter resume and references can be sent to our Human Resources Department. A panel of internal and external stakeholders are going to convene following that budget release, so it'll be a week or two after that. And then we'll be looking at this position, really providing oversight to both planning and economic development throughout our organization, partnering with BID, LDC, IDA, and looking at our relationship with those entities and how that works in the future. We're also recruiting a junior engineer, an engineering tech, electrician, and a couple other positions. Those are our key priorities right now, is really looking at that staffing. And we also did, we also welcomed aboard a new recreation supervisor, Amy Osterhaus started last week, and so we're excited to have her onboard. She's not here tonight. The other piece I just want to let folks know is we will be experiencing some staffing shortages, shortages in our front office in the coming weeks due to some unforeseen circumstances. And we ask for your patience as we move through that. Staff are going to work together to make sure that we can handle those flows, but we do have a staff that will be out on leave for a little while, and so we're going to work through that. But as we move through that, it is going to be a little challenging, so please just have patience with the team as, as they do that. And that is it for my report at this time.
Thank you.
I had to gather myself, but I don't want to leave out my two boards. I'll make it real quick.
Can we just pause for a second, because I think there's going to be an accident? I see you talking to each other. If you're looking for the opportunity, oh, okay.
Thank you.
It's all yours, Counselor Galanese, if you can do it.
I'm good. All right, so the Police Budget Advisory Board last, or met last month, where chief, where over the last few months, without a city comptroller, they compiled questions that they submitted to Chief Paslakwa, and Chief Paslakwa shared the answers to those questions to the board recently. And these are questions that included clarity, online items, and questions of where money was spent, and, and pretty much discussions on the police budget-related issues, and items to give members a better understanding of where the money is spent at the police The board also, I believe by September 5th, submitted recommendations to our city manager that she will be taken into consideration, that she will be rolling out the budget on September 21st. The planning board met last month, and it was an informal review of a site plan for the Nardozzi Construction, for their proposed building and associated site work at the industrial park location on Forged Avenue. It was basically handing their paperwork over to make sure the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. A formal review is in the near future, and the, these type of projects, especially one like this, that there hasn't been anything built in industrial park in quite a while, we should be excited for. This is what Geneva needs to have happen. So these are all good things. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate the City of Geneva and our Geneva Police Department on the official swearing-in, I'm not going to say recently, but in the past few weeks, Officer Hudson and Officer Douglas, who both completed their, I'm not sure of the right terminology, but their, their full training to become full police officers, full-time police officers. And I also want to congratulate Officer Ron Evelyn, who after, I believe today, is no longer an officer, but a sergeant Evelyn. And that's great that we're starting to get some positive things happening at our police station. So congrats to all of them. And, you know, I just want to touch on something that the mayor and Anthony, and I believe Bill, touched on going into the budget season, and that is, you know, you're going to get the pros and cons, and the people complaining, and the people telling you, you know, just be patient with the DRI. I'm one of those guys. I have faith in it. But the one thing that I don't have faith in is because, and the labor, and labor kills, but we cannot take on projects like this that are going to be so overwhelming with labor after they're done, and we have, and we're not being proactive about it at all, because the plants went in the ground, there's in the ground, and yes, there are people out there doing busy work, and I thank them all for that, but it's overwhelming. You drive around, you can pick streets where there's, you can't even see the curbs, the weeds are so high, coming up through the, between the sidewalk and the curb, the street and the curb. And we're thriving on having people come here and thinking Geneva is beautiful, because it is, but these are the little things that we need to polish up, and we need to get our act together quickly, because the monster's out there now, and it's almost completely done. And that's just in the summertime. A whole new monster's been created with the snow, and it's going to be. And I hope we have a good plan on that, because it's coming and it's coming fast. These things concern me, and I know that they concern the residents out there, and these are the things that I believe that when businesses come here to want to do business here or to, you know, set up shop here, are some of the things that they, they key on is that type of things and how we handle them. We can all be better, but I don't think anyone expected what we have going on here with the DRI, but it's something that we should have known better from the start. That's all I have.
Okay, next on our agenda, as of September 1st, Supervisor Don Fedora has left his position as the Ward 1 and 2 Supervisor for Ontario County. We are fortunate enough to have four interested candidates, who we went through the interview process last week and yesterday, and that's on our agenda for this evening, so the floor is open. Counselor Noon?
We concluded our interviews last night, as the mayor just pointed out, and I think there's still some questioning going on between, you know, of some of the candidates, and I personally feel like we haven't had enough time to really hash this out. You know, I'd like to see us sit in the room and select our, you know, our top two, say, and go around and highlight the positives and the weaknesses of all those, of both candidates, and then maybe see where the votes lie and then see where people's gut feelings are before we bring this to the floor. In light of various information that's been going around just over the last 24 hours, I think that information is worth exploring and discussing a little further. So I personally would favor tabling this. The city or the county meeting is September 15th, so in my view, we have plenty of time to have another brief meeting and a special meeting to appoint this person, so they could be seated in time for the September 15th meeting. I would really like to see that discussed further and not just quickly rushed to, as I know, you know, the mayor had a personal obligation, and so he didn't take part in those brief conversations we had, and other councillors were missing, and some councillors didn't get to see other interviews. So I really think that's just cause to table this, but get it done quickly, though.
Motion to table, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second by Counselor Galanese.
Discussion.
No discussion when you table. There's no discussion when you table. Clerk, please call the roll and the motion to table.
Counselor Noon?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Nay.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Nay.
Counselor Cameron?
Nay.
Counselor Salamendra?
Nay.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
It's a tie.
So it's defeated.
Defeated.
Any other motions on the floor?
Can I, can I make it see? But just, I'm going to be out of town until Monday evening, so Monday evening's the 12th, correct? So if you can schedule something, you know, you want to, that's, I'd like to be part of the discussions, that's all, that's what I want, it's a point of information.
So you do want to table it?
No, he doesn't want to table it, but there's no other motions on the floor.
I'm just, so I'm going to move on to the next agenda. I'm not going to be here until Tuesday morning.
Okay. We're going to move on to the next agenda.
Wait, wait a minute.
Counselor Galanese, yes.
Can we, can we just say that on Tuesday, since he's going to be back on Tuesday night, set it up right now and get this?
Sure.
Tuesday night at 5:30?
Counsel would like to have an executive session, is that what we're proposing?
Yeah.
What was the ex, the exact date?
13th is Tuesday night.
So two nights before.
I will be here the 13th, so I'm okay with that, that's, that's fine. If people want to do the 13th or the 14th.
Thank you very much. She gets it before.
If you're, if you're voting in an executive session, I can't make it, so I would prefer the vote to be tonight in a public voting meeting.
We're not voting in an executive session. We would have to come out of executive session to vote.
Right, but I'm, on that night, we are here for the public voting meeting, and I don't agree with tabling, and it failed, so I think there are other motions on the table.
There's no other motions on the table.
Let me just ask a question, then. So per Laura's comment, could we have a special council meeting Tuesday?
According to the charter?
So that we have a, we have a, you know, a half an hour, an hour conversation, and then we have a special meeting immediately following, so that the public can participate, and it can also be taped.
We could direct the clerk to set an agenda to have an executive session with the expectation of coming out of an executive session to vote, so yes, we can do that.
Yes, and I'd like to make sure that also Laura can attend by Zoom.
Local law doesn't allow attendance to executive session?
No, not the executive.
Right, for the vote.
To the vote. If you just let me finish my, my comment, she's not allowed an executive session via Zoom, but she is allowed once we come out of executive session.
And so we'll make Zoom available for her, correct?
If she's still in her situation.
That's fine.
We have a local law that surrounds this.
Okay.
So just follow the procedures, and we'll be okay. Okay. Next on our agenda is a resolution, or excuse me, the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 300 entitled Solid Waste Hauler License presented by our city manager.
At the August 3rd council meeting, council voted to not put a cap on the number of solid waste hauler licenses, and staff is currently still working on a hauler agreement and suggested fees for this revised application process, which would begin in 2023. We would share that with council prior to We would share that with council prior to launching that. And the advisement of city staff members remains the same to not limit the number of haulers.
Need a motion? Counselor Noon, second by Counsel Galanese, discussion. Counsel Galanese?
This question is for city manager. So let me have some clarity on when this was first brought to council by city staff. The recommendation was for this to be, you guys recommend that we what?
For unlimited haulers.
Clerk, please call the roll. Sorry, Counsel Camera.
I just want to, I want to gut check something. I mean, I wasn't, I was only, I was not in favor for unlimited number of haulers. But it seems like most of the council wants unlimited number of haulers. I think that's a mistake, but the concern though, I want to express, I want to just, the part that I want to gut check is I want to make sure that we still have section, we haven't made any changes to the section of, where is it? Subdivision L where it says trash and recycling containers, that's completely intact. This has to do with the labeling of the recycling and the toters and the whatever, either recycling or. Okay, so that's completely intact. The recommended, the changes all here have nothing to do with that one. That one is going to be in the final zoning of the final ordinance for trash, right?
I believe so, yes. Nothing has changed since that first reading.
Okay, so that we will enforce and the labels and we will provide the labels, at least from using the county funding, and we're going to enforce labeling of our toters. I just want to, I sent something out, I believe, to the council. But the Recycle Across America Organization, which is working with communities all over the United States, they said, "The society-wide standardized labels for bins are the number one solution to solving the recycling crisis because the labels help people recycle more and recycle right wherever they might be. The standardized labels reduce the amount of garbage thrown in recycling bins, which in turn makes recycling economically viable. It's that simple." So I hope we're going to enforce the labeling. We're going to get them on the toters and then enforce it. Okay, thank you. Otherwise, I'm good to go.
Counsel Regan?
I would just like to clarify. I did send this out to council and I got a verbal or in email saying this would be true, but it doesn't read this way. My concern is we do have the micro hauler setup. That would be allow a small truck to pick up and bring things, all your trash, to the Geneva Resource Recovery Park. Part of the vision of that place also involves, especially for people who don't want to pay for or can't afford to pay for a trash hauler. It also should allow for people to bring their own goods there. So their own waste there, which would mean all the recyclables, you know, it's one-stop shopping solution here. So all the recyclables, organic waste and things that must end up going to the landfill. And of course, they're not set up for that now, but that is the vision there. And right now it does say subdivision A one, section three hundred three, which is page twenty-two of the packet, if you're interested. It requires contracting with solid waste collection licensed by the city. The owner of the residence, residential and multifamily premises within the city of Geneva or individual places of business shall contract. It doesn't allow for people to bring their own things to this resource that we have. I don't know whether we need an amendment. I know people are tired of amendments, but I just want to verify that that will be allowed, even though it doesn't say that. It says in there that you're required to contract to have that done. Is there?
So my interpretation is that Resource Park is valuable and we've given it the opportunity to exist and grow and we want to continue that. So this ordinance would not stop that from happening. But I agree with your concern, you know, if there was any enforcement other than that, I'd be disappointed.
It's the opinion that we don't need to say it and we just assume it?
I think it's implied. That's what I interpreted as.
I don't think it's implied, but as long as there's assurance.
There's no ban on it. That means it's perfectly fine to contract with anybody.
It says it's required to contract with a private hauler. That's what it says. And if you are bringing your own things to that park, you don't have a private hauler.
But they are the private hauler.
They're not picking up. A hauler picks up.
So they would be transferring it themselves. I don't think it limits that. I think, I think you're okay. I think it's implied. And as long as we continue to promote that.
All right, well, it's in the record that we all think it's.
I think it's great too that.
I would, I just want to see that be developed in the way that it is a vision. And I have one more. This is even more trivial. But I am also concerned with the fact that it does say in no way somewhere will this restrict people from getting rid of their own yard clippings and, you know, the stuff in their yard. And it doesn't say anything about where. It just says you can just get rid of your lawn clippings and trims from shrubbery. But it doesn't say where. I mean, I would have preferred, and I'll just say it publicly again, I don't know if it needs an actual amendment, that at least says properly, get rid of them properly. I mean, ideally you would say that you bring it down to that Resource Recovery Park, which does take the city waste like that, you know, so.
How can you force people to take their stuff to a service?
Well, you're forcing the landfill to take, I mean, everyone has. Right, but I would say properly. You don't want people dumping it in the lake. You don't want people putting it in their friend's backyard. You know, I just.
You're preventing them from burning it. You may have a campfire now. There's a no burn law.
Yeah, that's a separate ruling. I'm sorry to interrupt in this conversation with things that I find are important, but thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Noon?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Nay.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Nay.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next on our agenda is a resolution authorizing the intermunicipal agreement by the City of Geneva with the towns of Waterloo and Geneva concerning the expansion of the ATAD system at Marsh Creek presented by our city manager.
So we just started this discussion at our last meeting. This is a cost-sharing agreement. The towns of Waterloo and Geneva have both agreed to this in their previous meetings. And the city will provide, in collaboration with them, local matching funds of this, can't remember what WIA stands for and right now at this time, but the WIA project that we're going to talk more about in the next resolution as well. It's for the expansion of our ATAD system and it's that grant program.
Need a motion? Counsel Camera, second by Counsel Peeler. Any discussion? And the only comment I have is this is seriously needed and I might not have been paying attention, but the town of Geneva and the town of Waterloo both passed the resolutions. So this is how we create the opportunity for economic development. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Counselor Noon? Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next on the agenda is a bond resolution to finance improvements to the Marsh Creek wastewater treatment plant and amending, restating, replacing, and partially repealing bond resolution dated August fourth, 2021. Our new comptroller, Stephanie Nuka.
So Amy kind of talked about it a little bit already. What I'm here to present is authorizing the issuance of the nine point two million dollar bond and repealing the seven million dollar bond that was approved at the August fourth, 2021 meeting. This is so that we can expand our ATAD at the wastewater treatment center. Joe's been keeping me up on all of the acronyms. So basically, worst case scenario, if we don't get the WIA grant, this will increase our bond payment. Essentially, if we had to bond for the entire thing, would be an additional three hundred and five thousand a year in bond payment. And I know you had asked about the debt-to-income ratio. That would increase it for our sewer fund from roughly thirty-six percent to forty-one percent.
Thank you. I need a motion? Counselor Noon, second. Counsel Galanese, discussion. Counsel Peeler?
With our current sewer agreement with the town, do they also chip in for debt?
Yeah.
I believe they do. So this is something that they're going to partner with as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so expanding our debt is necessarily a sole burden of the residents?
Right. I just did worst case scenario for the debt-to-income ratio.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that because I think a lot of people, when they think about this partnership we have in the town, they, the first instinct they have is a, you know, the town gets a sweet deal.
Right.
And I think that the, it can be honestly stated that their previous staff did a pretty good job of making sure that it's an even-handed agreement.
It's a proportionate share.
Including absorbing some of that debt. So, thank you.
We are determined to land the grants also. And without this, there's no more economic development. We will be tapped out. So it's that important. Yep. Okay, any other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Noon? Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye. Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera? Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is the first reading of an ordinance amending the chapter three thirty-five entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City Code, Washington Street presented by our city manager.
So the current code indicates no special parking restrictions for the south side of Lower Washington Street between the intersection of Park Place and Paltney Streets, except for no parking from the West Curb Line of Park Place to point sixty feet westerly. Prior to my arrival, the Director of Public Works, the interim city manager and council met with the residents of Washington Street to discuss some of the challenges with the parking there and provided some information about the parking areas and those boundaries. After that conversation, the team met and recommends now a two-hour parking limit be enacted for the south side of Washington Street from one oh one Washington Street through one seventeen to one nineteen Washington Street. Two-hour parking only effective Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. And as I mentioned, the residents have received property surveys and a notice of the intent to create this change prior to this meeting.
Need a motion? Counsel Galanese, second by Counsel Noon, discussion, Counsel Peeler. Come around.
Would anyone like me to pull that area up on the map on the projector here?
Yes.
Yep, yep. Counsel Galanese?
So I don't agree with this at all. And I don't agree with this with the simple fact that my whole entire life, there has never been a restriction in that area, to my knowledge. And I used to go to Monaco's all the time and like Mr. Buckley came up here and stated, I feel what he's saying, he's a hundred percent right. And I seen this happen already once before this year happened to Wing Tie, where with the DRI project, we eliminated parking spaces, the old parking spaces for that business there. So we're handicapping businesses by doing this there. I'm sure if we asked him if a car got into where he parks all the time, would he be mad? He would find another place to park. What I don't agree with are the two resident owners of, that are like guard that with their life. That's wrong. And that we have to go to the extremes of this right here, just because there's a couple of bad apples on the street. To me, this seems pointless and I think that you're, the people who abide by the rules and play by the rules, like I said, if somebody was to park in his spot, he would park into the next spot next to him. He's not guarding his space only when he had to do it. So to me, I think we're putting the cart before the horse here and I think that we need to explore other alternatives. I don't know what those are, but I don't like where this is going.
Back to Counsel Peeler?
I agree. To me, this sounds like that one kid on the bus that ruins it for everyone and, you know, now the whole ride is ruined. So, and that usually means leadership has reached its wits' end, right? When you have that one situation where this one person ruins it, it means these people stop thinking about how to solve that problem with the individual causing the problem. So I don't know about anyone else here, but I think an alternative creative approach to this from staff, a Plan B, Plan C, something else that we can, that can solve the current problem. I would be curious to, and welcome that, welcome that. Because I want this to be a last resort, not a first resort. And I feel like this is the first resort. We haven't had any other solution brought before us technically for this as a, as a change of our parking policy.
And we would have to, the city would have to maintain that space now, correct?
So Counsel Noon and then Counsel Burrow?
I was just going to say, I don't think it would hurt to take Mr. Buckley's suggestion and create a small committee made up of city staff or counselors and neighborhood residents around the area to maybe come up with some sort of solution. Obviously, you can't please everyone, as everyone well knows, but I don't think it would hurt if we made the effort to create a committee to look into that. But maybe not so much for the sixty days, maybe make it just a thirty-day committee, you know, where they have thirty days to report back to us prior to winter and things like that.
We're not talking about the same thing anymore. Are we?
Yeah, we're mixing things.
We're mixing things up.
Oh, am I mixing things up?
Mr. Brennan brought that idea up.
Oh, sorry.
Winter parking, that's okay.
I apologize. I didn't write his name next to it.
You're talking about the citywide, whereas we're talking about this one little sliver up here on, right?
I apologize, sorry.
That's okay.
That's all right. Just want to make sure I'm not getting confused. We all know where to, Counsel Burrow?
Yeah, I, I think you would be surprised at how nimble human beings are when it comes to their consumerism and in-and-out purchases. And self-regulation actually works very well in certain circumstances. And let me just refer you to Linden Street. There are seventeen parking spaces on Linden Street, but there are no lines delineating the parking spaces on Linden Street. People that park on Linden Street self-regulate the space that they need to park their vehicle in seventeen spots that are unmarked. And it works fantastic. We don't need lines on where to put your vehicle in those spots on Linden Street. When it comes to these spots in front of this in-and-out retail area with two professional offices that I think the judge could probably back me up, it would be uncommon to have an appointment in excess of two hours in one of those professional offices. That this area, I believe we would be surprised, could be self-regulated without a timing situation where we're marking tires for two hours. So we've, we've come to the point where we have our, we have our building owners and our tenants that have, that have come together, which I'm grateful for. But I don't believe we need to have a parking limit. So I think if the crux of the resolution is to put a timeline on here, I would just say we don't need the resolution and don't worry about the two-hour parking limit and go with self-regulation. And I think we would be pleasantly surprised because humans can do this. I'm confident that we can.
I see hands up. I'm going to try to make sure everybody gets it first time around. So I'm going to do Counsel Regan, Counsel Salamendra, and Counsel Camera, and then we'll go around after I get my turn.
Yeah, I have, I'm not in favor of this either, but I think it would be helpful to clarify kind of what, how this is such a problem. My understanding is there are people who are basically not, who call this private property their own parking space. It seems like that's the problem here to address, not how long people, I keep doing that, how long people can stay. You know, if people are parking and putting up signs saying this is their spot, when they don't own it, I, I, you know, obviously that's where you start to, to, um, to correct that issue, not make everybody else have to, you know, watch their car and move them in an area that isn't accustomed to that.
Can we just point this out for the people that are watching so that they understand? My understanding, can we just do that, please?
Sure.
People watching. You know why we're talking about.
So this area.
You gotta zoom out more. It's more than that, there you go.
This area right here.
Keep going. No, but I mean, keep going. You gotta go to your right. Move, no, move the pointer to the left.
Up the street here.
There you go, you got lines and no lines.
Lines and no lines. So this area here.
There you go.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna move to Counselor Salamandra.
Um, as Counselor Regan said, um, this is not private property. I don't believe it should be treated as such. While I believe that the neighbors might have an opinion that's appropriate to share about the, um, timing, it's, I don't think it's up for any business in that row, including the law office, to mark it as private property. I support this because I believe in fairness. And if city businesses downtown can't, uh, mark parking in front of their spot as for their own, then neither should those in Paltney.
Counselor Camera.
Well, just so, so that we're clear, the, the, the spot that doesn't have lines on it.
Is included.
Is included and, and it is city property. And the, the businesses that are adjacent to that, for some reason, have been blocking it off, saying it's their places to park. And so what we really have to do is get those property owners to leave those spaces unfettered so that the public can use them. And that's the most important thing. So maybe we should be, instead of ticketing people for two-hour, you know, parking limited fractures, we should be ticketing those property owners who insist that this city property is theirs to, um, manage and occupy as they see fit. And, and so they have to be disabused of the fact that it's not their property and the public can park there. So I, I think maybe the two-hour parking limit, I'm good with Tom's suggestion. And we just have to try to cajole, encourage, you know, or whatever we can with those property owners and get them to see that this is not their property and it's public access.
I do see Counselor Galanese and Counselor Noon's hand, but I gotta chime in here real quick before we go to round two. So we wouldn't be at this point because this is not the first attempt. If you talk to DPW, if you talk to the police department, if you talk to store owners there, there's been some very serious attempts to cause disruptions and maybe even attempts of bodily harm for parking situations in this area. That's why we're at this point right now. And also during the winter politely, some of the spaces have been plowed. Other places have been on purpose have not been plowed to prevent parking in those areas. So this is, this is not a first time around, this is a multiple time around. I'm not hearing any recommendations for amendments to the ordinance. And I'm not hearing, I'm hearing mixed support or lack of support for the ordinance. So we're gonna go around for round two, but I just wanna make sure everybody understood that this is not a simple issue. It's been very complicated and it's gotten to the point where it was almost violent. Counselor Galanese and then Counselor Noon and Counselor Peeler.
So, obviously, I don't have a solution, but I have a suggestion. But this isn't why I raised my hand, but can I make two, two points, I guess?
You can, you can. Do whatever, you can even make an amendment if you want.
Maybe, maybe line the whole entire thing. You can, you could put a, a, just like they do when they pave the street. You put, you cannot park here for twenty-four hours, blah, blah, blah. Paint it and stripe it with parking spots. With notices out stating that this is not private property, it's public property. If, if we, I, I don't know how you would word it. I mean, we have a judge, an attorney sitting right there, Judge Buckley, I, I mean, what do we do? But my thing is, is until we figure this out, I like to call motion to table this, instead of going around and around.
We have a motion to table, is there a second? Second by Counselor Noon, no discussion. Clerk, please call the roll and the motion to table the first reading of this ordinance.
Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burrow.
Nay.
Counselor Peeler.
Nay.
Counselor Regan.
Nay.
Counselor Camera.
Nay.
Counselor Salamandra.
Nay.
Counselor Noon.
Aye.
Mayor Valentino.
Nay.
Motion defeated.
Mayor, can I just make?
Hold on, you can get your second round after Counselor Noon and then Counselor Peeler, then you.
So a, a few, probably about a month ago, I know we had these conversations about these particular parking spaces before. And I, I know that the one individual was spoken of about his behavior. And, and I always just thought to myself, who is this guy? So I, I had been sitting out at Monaco's about a month ago. And, and all of a sudden I heard all this screaming, yelling and, and profanity language. And I turned around and, and then there was this gentleman that was chasing a gentleman out of his driveway. So, um, crazy me decides to get up and, and approach the guy. It's just a normal person and then I chose to tell him that I was part of city council. But he refused to tell me who he was after I said that, which I thought was interesting. But I, I want to say that I, I witnessed firsthand, uh, the temperament of this particular gentleman. He took no qualms to, uh, share with me, uh, very explicitly how he feels about his property and what he considers to be his property. The irony that I find about the whole situation is I took no of the parking, uh, the no parking sign that is placed at the end of the driveway. And really, I mean, realistically, that's telling people not to park in his driveway. But also, one would also perceive that obviously he's trying to keep people from that particular spot as well. And as I proceeded to drive away, I saw him get in his car. And I, I took a double take, I was like, wait a minute, this guy is parked his car outside of his driveway? Is it clearly to keep people from parking in that one particular spot? So it, it was, it was good for me though to finally, you know, to place a face and actually have a conversation. And he did eventually calm down, uh, but he was very passionate, like the gentleman we saw here earlier, uh, about, um, making his statements about the parking situation. So I, I just think it's obviously important that we, we tread lightly, if you will. But also, uh, it's not, you know, just to, to back up with the mayor said, it's not an easy task. And, and I witnessed it that day. Uh, and that day, it really wasn't even about parking. It was about a guy who decided to go check out his Corvette in his driveway, uh, which he did not appreciate the guy in his driveway and on his property. Then it got into the parking and, and the college students and, and the whole nine yards. But it's no easy task, uh, and I can def, I witnessed firsthand why this is very challenging dealing with the situation. And I'm not quite sure how to solve that. But it's clearly an issue that needs to be addressed. But you also can't, um, draw blood from a stone. So I think we need to keep that in mind going forward with the situation as well.
Counselor Peeler.
Couple of things. I mean, I grew up in this area, all right? I know this area, for the longest time, this area had nothing here but Mr. Buckley. Okay, and I grew up getting cheese and salami at Monaco's, so I miss that place so much. My grandma Feligno would bring me there every Sunday, I love it. How you do this to me when you're the longest talker here? You stop it.
All right, easy, order.
So look, so part of this thing is this guy's driveway. This is the mouth of this guy's driveway. So he deserves to leave his property and not be blocked. So is there a way, and, and is this situation technically about him leaving his driveway? Or him liking to park in the right-of-way, that's city-owned, that exits his driveway? And if that's the case, I think the city owes this guy a, a driveway. Like we need to, we need to designate part of this as a driveway. Because nobody can just shut down a person's home if they'll be able to leave their home, right? And then you've got, so you've got people parking in front of your property driveway, that's madness. So I, I, I don't, I don't know if two-hour parking is gonna technically solve this because there's gonna be people still parking in front of his driveway. So, uh, and I don't know if an amendment would cover that as well because it would be a capital project to add curbing and, and carve out a real driveway, right? Because otherwise, people are just gonna assume it's a parking spot, they don't know it's a driveway. So I don't, I don't know, and this guy's entitled to a driveway, but he's not entitled to just park his car in every parking spot to block people, right? But if it's just about the driveway and I don't know the deal, I'd like to know if it's just about the driveway. I think we owe him a driveway. I mean, this happened on my street on Jefferson Avenue. Mr. Devaney got part of Jefferson Park as his driveway. And he sued the city and won. So he, so this, this is really important that this guy's, can get out of his driveway. So I don't know the solution, but I know he, he needs a driveway. And he can't be blocked. He can't be impeded by residents. That's freedom.
Counselor Cameron, then Counselor Salamandra, we're not doing round three. We're not doing round three. Counselor Camera.
Well, I, I'm listening to what Counselor Peeler's saying and I, I think it, um, you know, technically that does solve the problem, but, um, I guess, I, I think that, I think the thing is, is that he first of all can't threaten anybody. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do ordinance work and zoning work and, and parking restriction work based on somebody threatening somebody. So that's gotta stop. And, um, you know, and I don't know how we stop that. But, uh, um, what we can do is offer him maybe, you know, if it's one place, it solves the problem. We leave everything else the same and he isn't parking all over the place, he's just parking in his spot. That's something to consider and maybe we should just table this for one more meeting and think about this and talk to him and see if we can, uh, get him to pay for its conveyance to him and get other people to weigh in. I'd like to see, you know, what, what harm to the rest of the public does it cause? Or what cost does it ca, cause to the rest of the public to convey that square or that rectangle to him? Are there any other situations in the vicinity where that solution will be imposed on us by others? Are, are there other situations around the city? Because if there's fifty other places like that, then we're, 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 you know, sticking our necks out. So, so, so that I just, you know, maybe the, maybe the staff can do a little more research, look at the area, look at this and see if this is a one-off and, um, come back to us and, um, as, and, and also incorporate Counselor Burrow's suggestion that we don't necessarily impose a two-hour limit on that, on that space, on those spaces.
Okay, I'm gonna have Counselor Salamandra and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Vernudy to come forward and give us a little history here before we, we, we're gonna place a vote here.
It seems to me that there is a problem in that parking area because one homeowner doesn't want someone parking in front of his home. I've been approached by him, I've witnessed it too. It also see, and he's aggressive. It also seems like other tenants in that same parking area do not want people parking in front of their business. So if we're going to solve a problem of an aggressive homeowner saying that people can't park on city property, I don't understand how we can do it by saying that other places in that same area can limit parking in front of their businesses. That is unfair. I, um, understand the resistance to a two-hour parking. And I hear Counselor Camera and other counselors say things like, well, maybe we can work with them. But you really need the, um, the, the non-negotiable to work with them. And to say that if that gentleman or either gentleman who don't want people parking on city parking, in per city parking spaces, when they park their cars there, there needs to be a way to say you're in violation of something. And so it makes sense to me that if two people, if everybody in that plaza seems to think that the parking in front of where they are renting or living is for them only, that we have a problem and we need to treat it universally.
Mr. Vernudy, please, a little history and then we're gonna go to a vote.
Green lights on. Two thousand nineteen, city council voted on this same topic. There was a capital improvement project on Washington Street. Prior to that, I believe, and this area was paved. I don't remember the condition of it, I wasn't here then. But the delineation was created. My predecessor, Mr. Perry, tried to, um, let's call it a handshake deal, negotiate, get it, get the best interest of all the players involved at the time of coming up with the signs that Mr. Buckley explained to us earlier. The signs typically have worked. New business started. We welcome Monaco's and their success has been overwhelming, which is great, we wanna promote that. But on top of the one resident and property owner who's very concerned and aggressive, as mentioned by some of you, you witnessed it, there's also the business. The business is a coffee shop, it's a cafe, it's a bakery, you can get lunch and breakfast there, delicious food. People sometimes pull up and use their computers and they're on Wi-Fi, they're doing studies, they're chatting around the globe. So they may sit and take those spaces a longer. There are tenants that Counselor Salamandra referenced, great points. People live above these places now, right? So they need a place to park. The existing code rules allows for parking there. And sometimes they're there, twenty-four hours, thirty-six hours, maybe days, who knows? It's a complex issue that doesn't affect just one person. Uh, it's in the college area. Hope our William Smith is two blocks away, plenty of residential apartments, students coming and going constantly, it's a very great hub of activity. So the solution that we present to you is to try to get some control over it, not gonna appease everyone, um, but that's, that's the history. It could, could there be better solutions, perhaps? We haven't found them since two thousand nineteen. Prior to that, the, the work that's been going on now, there's been, and Mr. Buckley can attest, I heard somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-two car accidents there this past year alone. They have a record count in that neighborhood of people backing into other cars. It's, it's, it's private property because it's the right-of-way, but it is also city property because it's the right-of-way. Every driveway in the entire city between the curb and the sidewalk has the same condition. So to do a study on where other places are, the whole city, it's our right-of-way. So we do have off, we have a, a code for off-street parking within the right-of-way. People request that, it can be granted, there's different criteria to be made for that. If you notice the place in the, uh, the white looking pavement mark there on the computer screen, where the one car is parked just behind the white car, that is concrete. That person had requested that in two thousand eight. They were, they were granted that by the city to park in the street. Further up Washington goes towards Jefferson, several properties like that. Counselor Peeler, you see him up there, uh, so. Possibly. So that's the history. City did make a, a change to the, to municipal code back in twenty nineteen. We've been working on it and not everybody's ever happy.
Thank you very much.
If the pilot were to evaporate, the winter parking pilot, if that were to go away, with these, all these, and based on how these parking spaces are governed, would all these parking spaces now be forced to not park there because it's considered street parking?
No, it's not the street.
No, it'd be, we would treat it like a parking lot.
It's a parking lot now.
It will have to be, yeah.
It's a parking lot.
Were you considering a parking lot?
Yeah, clerk, it's a small one.
If this goes, yes, if this resolution is passed or some variation of it, it will be a parking lot.
Clerk, please call the roll.
What's, what, I believe years ago, that wasn't all open space like that. There was a curb island somewhere.
We have, we have an ordinance, first reading of ordinance on the table. We, we've talked more about this. If we don't want the ordinance, we're gonna place a vote, not to have the ordinance. If we wanna amend the ordinance, we're gonna place a vote to amend the ordinance. We wanna table the ordinance, which we tried once already, we would do that. So we're gonna call the roll on the ordinance as written. So we're gonna call the roll on the ordinance as written. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
No.
Burl?
Nay.
Counselor Peeler?
Nay.
Counselor Regan?
Nay.
Counselor Camera?
I'm saying aye, because it's a recommendation of our staff, and I think they've, they've seen this long enough, and they think it's a, it's a solution that we should try.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Noon?
No.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion defeated.
Thank you, moving on. Resolution, uh, that doesn't give you any direction at all, I apologize for that, staff, um, and I think Counselor Noon's mistake might be a great remedy. Cause I think this needs to continue to have a discussion, so if there's a council that would like to join in on a group of people to try to come up with a better solution, I think staff would appreciate that. Because it's not an easy solution. Um, and, and something needs to be done, otherwise we're gonna continue to have issues.
I, I would like to join in in that, um, it, it is my ward, I wanted to have a second round of comment, and I wasn't able to do that tonight, um, to make some corrections on some other statements. Um, and I've also been a target of bodily injury at the location, on more than one occasion.
Thank you very much, Counselor Burl, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Buckley, and maybe somebody from your department, Joe. Maybe if we can start some kind of an or, uh, group, please, get together and maybe get those neighbors together and have a discussion. Come back to us in, in, in a month, please, you know, before the snow falls or something, thank you very much. Next is a resolution authorizing Castle Creek Stabilization Project presented by our city manager.
So, uh, Castle Creek, this is, um, something that was brought to us. Um, it is another partnership effort, uh, between the City of Geneva, Ontario County Department of Public Works, and Ontario County Water and Soil Conservation District. It would support engineering permitting and labor, labor and equipment, um, for stabilizing a part of Castle Creek. Um, as well as there is some funding that will come as part of this, so it allows us to partner with them to do this work.
Need a motion, Counselor Camera, second, Counselor Noon, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Noon? Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution scheduling a public hearing in connection with an application to New York State Office of Community Renewal for a CDBG grant funding presented by our city manager.
So this is, um, a new round of MAP Grant Funding, or Micro Enterprise Assistance Program. This would schedule a public hearing, uh, prior to the next council meeting, uh, to discuss going forward with this project, and we are engaged with MRB, who are, who is helping us, uh, develop the, our, our, respond to the RFP, um, to apply for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that.
Thank you, and I need a motion.
Motion.
Second. Counselor Regan? Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Noon? Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution authorizing a clean energy program with Heat Smart Monroe FLX, presented by Counselor Regan.
Thank you, I, I hope that this is an easy one. Um, so, uh, in two thousand seventeen, our community, the City of Geneva, was added as the hundredth, um, community in the New York State Energy and Development Authority, that's NYSERTA's, um, Clean Energy Community Program, we were appointed by the governor then, uh, to be a part of this. It's, um, one of the best things about it is it does, when you gain certain points, you, uh, get access to grants, um, if you're, if you follow certain things that they consider to be, uh, important steps to take to create a better and more environmentally friendly community. Um, this is one of those steps that is available to us, um, that it would be working with Heat Smart, um, Monroe, and they've now added Finger Lakes because they've been expanding. That kind of, one of the nice things about this is the town of Geneva has already uh, approved this, and they are going to be working with this group as well. What they do is, um, they are a, uh, uh, grant-funded, uh, program, so they're not like permanent, they're, and they're, they're not making money on this, um, for themselves, but they, um, at no charge and obligation to homeowners or communities, they will offer kind of workshops, um, presentations about how to make your home more efficient, energy efficient. They do tend to focus a lot on heat pumps, which I know is something many homes are considering, and it can be kind of a confusing process. But what they'll do is give you a no-cost energy assess, assessment of your home or your business, and advice in how you go about looking at these, what factors you weigh, uh, that kind of thing, and then they do have a vetted list of installers, and, and you would choose, if you choose to go ahead and make this investment in your home, you would choose the, uh, installer that you would like to have, um, get this going in your home. And the other good thing they do is they have up-to-date information on all the incentives that are provided to the homeowner. So you, you don't have to worry that you're missing some sort of a grant or incentive that would come your way by purchasing something that energy, is, makes your home more energy efficient. Um, and finally, the, as I mentioned, NYSERTA does give awards, grants, um, to communities, and I, I have asked the city manager to get us updated as to how many points we have or whatever, but this particular program, a community-wide education program, um, which we would not have to manage or conduct, we would work with the town to make these presentations. Um, this would give us a five-thousand-dollar grant if we followed through everything, um, appropriately. It does inv, it does, does ask for successful completion. Five residents have to express interest, I have a feeling we'd get there, uh, and, and obtain a free home energy assessment. And three residents, uh, have to follow up in some sort of energy con- conservation upgrade to their home. Um, you know, if this didn't happen, we wouldn't get the five thousand dollars, but we would have been, um, you know, benefited by having Heat Smart educate individual homes and businesses on, on, uh, how to better winterize and, and weatherize their home. So, um, I would like to, uh, propose that we join in this, and, um, that we work with this group, which is Heat Smart Monroe Finger Lakes, to, uh, program educational sessions on efficient home heating and cooling, as I've described, and I so move.
Thank you, we have second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Peeler, I need discussion. Counselor Galanese? Okay. Counselor Peeler?
Thanks, Jan, this is great.
Yeah, it's an opt-in, I like it.
Fantastic, thanks, Jan.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Noon?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is the resolution that we added to the agenda, this resolution is for City Council to approve of the settlement for the Todd Powers and Lindsay Powers versus the City of Geneva. Index number one-one-six-zero-four-six-dash-two-zero-one-seven. Negotiated among the parties, which settlement will be paid by the State of New York pursuant to the Environmental Restoration Program, ERP, an ISO move. Yes, second by Counselor Noon. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Counselor Noon? Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Dangerously enough, next is a discussion on winter parking, and I would like to not belabor this, I believe, um, Mr. Brennan had one of the best ideas tonight, um, I, I am I am on the opposition in many ways, I would, uh, definitely, I know this goes over terrible with some people, but I'm, I'm ready to take staff's recommendation. So the table, the floor is open for winter parking discussion, but let's at least be considerate of each other, so. Counselor Camera, then Counselor Noon. Counselor Salamandra.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I, um, I have to confess, I, I would like, I'm glad this is just a discussion because I, I don't understand, um, prior, you know, the prior condition that well, and the new condition. Um, I think that this write-up is problematic, and I'd like to see this be done anyway. But I think what I've gleaned from this is that the current program that's in place has, needs tweaks. In other words, it's not perfect, um, but it's not necessarily off either. It's, there, there are, my understanding is there are communication issues, and not enough people are following it, if we, if we can get better communications, better signage, and everything else, I've been led to believe that the program will work better, people will respond better, and so I, I'd like, I'd like us to bring this back for another discussion and talk about the first things would be, how do we make the existing program work better? What are the things that, that seem not to work in it? And what are our solutions, realistic and efficacious enough to solve the problem so that we go another, another year, that's what I would like to see, I am torn um, between the two approaches, but our staff, uh, is, 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 is making this, um, I feel badly about not following their recommendation completely, or whatever, but I think that if they were stuck with the existing program, I think they'd come up with good ideas about how to fix it. And, um, and by the way, I, I don't, um, you know, in the write-up, I just wanna make sure that you all realize that I'm not taking this statement out of context where it says that, uh, instead of writing tickets, um, the police department couldn't respond, can respond to nine-one-one calls, I am completely, um, um, aware that if a officer is writing a ticket and a nine-one-one call comes in, he doesn't continue writing the ticket, and he, otherwise, and he or she goes off and responds to the nine-one-one call. So I just wanted people to know that I'm not gonna, um, misinterpret, uh, what this is, uh, saying.
Counselor Noon, then Counselor Salamandra.
Uh, I also, um, second the, the mayor's opinion of, of, uh, enforcing this from the city staff perspective, we gave this a shot. Uh, clearly it's not working. Um, no parking on the streets regardless of how some people are, are thinking it's blasphemy that, that we're gonna outlaw parking from two AM to six AM. If you do your research and you look anywhere, it's all the way from Cataragius County all the way up to Seneca County, almost every single municipality has some type of winter parking restriction. Obviously, it gets a little complicated, when I lived in Jamestown during the winter months, you had to alternate, uh, if you had to park on the city streets, uh, you had to alternate every other day, uh, from November till April. Um, and if you didn't, then you were obviously fined. Uh, and the fines doubled after ten business days, and then, uh, after twenty days, the fines tripled. And ultimately, it was moved to the part where you, uh, couldn't register your vehicle, uh, re-register with the DMV until you paid your fines. Um, and so in my opinion, there's no such thing as, uh, not strict enough enforcement of this, uh, I think it's very unsafe. Uh, I particularly always see a, the same vehicle parked on Castle Street in front of a no-parking winter sign. Nonetheless, every single year that has nothing but snow piled up around it, because they do not move their car. So yes, some humans, uh, do choose to make the right decisions, but some do not, and I can assure you the one on Castle Street definitely knows better than I'm referencing. Uh, but at the same time, again, this isn't new, um, if you look at any municipality, the, the ordinances are there. Um, and I fully support this, I think it's absurd that, uh, city staff is having to waste time and resources going back and replowing streets because people are irresponsible. Um, and as far as I'm concerned, I'd plow the car right, right along with the snow if I were the snowplow driver. Um, I just think it's beyond absurd. Um, and if you're an adult and you're driving a car, then you should know better to move your car, um, with no exception, because again, it's happening everywhere, um, and Geneva should not be any exception to that. Thank you.
Counselor Salamandra, and then Counselor Regan?
Um, unfortunately, I am going to have to disagree with staff on this one. Um, our residents pay an extremely high tax rate, and they pay for services, um, from the DPW and the police department, and I think at the very least, they ought to be able to park um, in the city. Uh, so many people in the other wards have driveways, uh, living downtown and having um, a lot of constituents who do, um, I have to go with the residents who elected me and say that I do not support this, and I would like to see staff put more effort into a workable solution that allows people to park on the street when there is no snow.
Counselor Regan, and then Counselor Burl, and then Counselor Peeler.
Uh, I too feel like apologizing to staff, but I, I feel, um, that the solution has to be in how to make this work. Um, I, the homeowners, uh, really are not, and, I mean, I was flooded with calls, it's amazing. It doesn't really affect, um, that many people in my ward, it does affect some, but, um, you know, the people without driveways, the people who have Airbnbs and are welcoming tourists to the home, you know, to the area that, you know, the, there's just so many people where it's problematic, and there, there isn't really an answer, they have to beg the church down the street to let them park there, uh, for the entire winter. Uh, especially when, as everyone has pointed out, it, it isn't a, a daily problem in the winter, it's a daily uh, solution to a problem that's not there, um, except for a handful of days in the winter, there's so many days that parking is, is, is available and, and okay. Um, I'm also just curious about some of the things in the report, like, um, well, first of all, I'm, when this gets re-looked at, I, I'd like to hear more about how it worked with, when there was alternate parking, um, and all these restrictions, the older program was in place. My recollection was seeing a lot of the same issues happening then too. Um, even though every day was the same thing, you'd still see that, those issues. And also, I don't understand the, um, the, the fact that, you know, the, the, so many more tickets were supposedly given out, but if you look at the chart that was, um, given to us, there were quite a few less tickets given out then in, in years when the ordinance, the old, um, system for restricting the parking was in place, so I think more needs to be done on that, I, but pri, the priority should be on how to better communicate and make sure it is known when there is an emergency.
Counselor Burl?
As you know, there is no such thing as an expert. And I am so opposed to this because if you can give me a couple of examples on one hand, on what we've done in the past three or four years on the existing parking situation on South Main Street, you'll have a hard time coming up with any issue. We're actually talking about South Main Street. All right? These residences were built prior to the development of a motor vehicle. We now have motor vehicles that, um, in each unit, there are two or three vehicles where we need to find a solution to park. So let's just throw that out there. Geneva does not receive a lot of snow. We do not live in the snow belt. We have perhaps three, four, five, however you wanna label, snow days out of a hundred and twenty. So the balance is, we're gonna have alternate parking for what? Inconvenience. People need a place to park. They actually don't have driveways. Okay? And, and they can, and it's, it has been working the last three or four years. The financials are very misleading and quite inaccurate. Uh, MEO, I'm assuming is a, is a police officer? Is a motor equipment operator? All right? It is a snow remover? It is a snow remover, and I, I'm looking in here for the rate of, of who we're paying to write tickets. I guess it's not here. It, it's not there, but I thought that I read that in the mix somewhere. So, the, the, you do not need to be a police officer to write a parking ticket, because in downtown Geneva, the majority of the parking tickets are written by Ted, okay? And he's a great deal for parking enforcement in the city of Geneva. So if we're looking at this as a revenue generator, obviously, we should not be employing police officers to write tickets when you don't have to be a police officer to write a ticket. But that could be subbed out, in the way I look at the world, when we know a snow event is coming, I got ticket writers that are working on commission or per ticket, and they're writing a lot of tickets, and that's really easy, and there's no benefits involved. Furthermore, I just lost my last comment here. I, I just lost, lost my, lost my train of thought here on my, on my last comment, but I can't, I cannot agree with, I, I just, I just cannot agree, oh, the last comment is, like other things, there has been actually very little, if any, enforcement of the violators during the days when you're not supposed to park, during a snow event, and that, and that actually has to do with the availability of a towing operation. So, the last two winters, I have been photographing vehicles that were in violation, that were not towed, and there has been no reason on why these vehicles weren't towed. At 2:00 AM, the tow trucks are out. If there's ever a deterrent on violating any parking ordinance, it is the embarrassment of having your vehicle towed, having to drive four or five miles away to pick it up, i.e. Red's Auto, okay?
Counselor?
That, that, that's exactly my point, and then you're gonna pay storage fees based on the number of days there, and enforcement takes care of the situation with, by those people who may be ignoring something so simple as to go on and register, because the majority of people are actually registering in our current system. Hobart and William Smith Colleges is, is, is also encouraging that their students that live in the area, or live on on-campus housing and parking on South Main Street, do it as well. So, I, I certainly cannot recommend that we go backwards when there has actually been very few issues in the last four years. Enforcement is the key, I can't make tow trucks arrive, and I can't, and I can't encourage people to op, open a towing operation, but there is very, very little enforcement on this. A ticket is not enforcement. $50 or $75, not a big deal. I'll stay there for three days and not move. Towing, I'm not doing it again.
Counsel Peeler?
Yeah, this pilot was a great idea, all right? I mean, if, if, this is like, people with driveways don't really care about this, big honkin' driveways, but if you don't got a big honkin' driveway, you are gonna get your car ticketed quick. I was switching cars with my wife one winter, and I was in the house for half an hour taking a shower, I got a ticket on the street. It's not even, it's not even about limited, limited winter parking. There's some streets that have been zoned zero parking once it's winter, so you can't park on that street from December through March. There's lots of streets like that, so this ordinance was a major benefit to residents who just have multiple vehicles, and I empath, I sympathize with the staff, with the load, with the workload, and, and this isn't a problem of the pilot, this is a problem that we don't have enough staff and equipment, and, and that's the real issue, and you, you talk to everybody about this pilot, and they love it, they love it. It's like, oh my God, I can have people over in the wintertime, and we're not gonna all get tickets. This is, and there's no snow on the ground, you're getting tickets, it's dry as a bone. You can see the powder, the salt on the street, there's nothing out there. So, the, the, I don't, I don't, I would really like to see us handle this without destroying the pilot, all right? This is a great program, we shouldn't even call it the pilot, it should just be our law. It's, isn't it called the pilot, parking pilot?
Pilot on top of a pilot on top of a pilot.
All right, so it's, I think we should not mess with the current program, it's, it works, if we properly get our staff situated and equipment situated, this is gonna go away. Everybody knows before they started this, the same areas in the city that people parked overnights during blizzards, they do it anyways, regardless of this law. Those people parked there, they're there either way, and it's, it's the same areas usually, so it's, those people park on the street, so.
Let's put this to rest, Council Galanese?
So I can't, I can't support this, I, I agree with, with Bill said, this is a lack of labor and equipment problem, and more so that the DRI is gonna bog down the snowplowing in downtown Geneva. But times have changed, businesses are booming, I'm not saying booming, but they're on the up and up from COVID, we don't need to handicap them or strap them, we gotta work with them, and we had Mr. Linger come up here to the podium, who I think has done great things with the city, and he is not the president or the chair of BID, but he made a suggestion that they didn't even know about it, and we work hand-in-hand with the downtown district all the time, but they were not informed about this, that's sort of disturbing to me, and I think that they should be in on this conversation, because like I said, the downtown business district has changed, and there are vehicles with multiple unit apartments now where there are multiple vehicles, and that, to say that they have to walk all the way to free parking is crazy to me. And South Main Street, handicap those residents there with multiple apartments, multiple cars to have to go somewhere. I know that it's a pain in about plowing snow, but we do live in the Finger Lakes, and we have to deal with it, but we also have to accommodate the taxpayer, who is there for a service that is provided by their tax money. So, I'm not for this, and it's one of the very few times that I go against staff, but it's the way it is with this one.
Our city manager, next, please.
So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, this was discussion only, so there is no resolution, this was to get your take on looking at this pilot, reviewing it. Staff has started to do that, that's the information that they provided. The recommendation is in there, but that doesn't mean they're not willing to continue to look at this. As I said, the reason that others haven't been involved at this point is because we wanted to bring it to you first, to decide your appetite for looking at this. From there, it would involve, you know, how, how we wanted to move forward. I think we've gotten some of the ideas from, from here tonight, we can continue to look at it. There are some challenges with whatever we're calling this, the pilot, non-pilot, or pilot, 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 but I think we can continue to look at how we do this. As Councilor Member Noon said, there are a lot of cities, towns, villages that struggle with this, have done very similar things, have rolled back what we've done, have done all sorts of kind of merging of these. So this is just the beginning of the discussion, it's not a resolution for tonight, it's the start of what we want to look forward to. We will be heading into snow season, there may only be measurable dates of, you know, a few times a year that we're remembering, but the plows do come out more regularly than that, so I just want to make sure that people are aware that even those dustings can cause changing of where you park or how that happens. So, we'll continue on this, but this was only a discussion to get kind of the feel from council, and I think we have that.
Thank you, city manager. I, I, when I was listening to Council Burrow, I did come up with a solution, Joe. We charge him a thousand bucks for the ticket, and we enlist 30 tow trucks on any snow event. That way we can enforce it. Okay, we're gonna move on.
Can I ask, can I ask a question to the previous council, you two? It's my thinking back that you guys spent, I don't know if it was four years before us or the previous four years, but you guys spent extensive amount of time on this.
It's, it's on its third or fourth rendition, so it started with text, then it went to further types of communication. Communication is not the issue, I can tell you that right now, it's human behavior. The, the chronic abusers are the chronic abusers, and unless you have the resources to ticket it and tow them, it's gonna keep happening.
Ticket and tow them.
And finally, I was, I-
You didn't, you didn't read the report. The report would tell you, they, you don't have the ability to tow them all in that timeframe.
I know.
You don't have the ability to tick them in that timeframe.
I just want to say, I just want to make sure that people know out there that Anthony Noon, Council Noon, did not mean for the city DPW to plow cars, okay? I just want to make sure everybody realizes that he did not really mean that, it was an expression.
Hopefully Channel 8 won't show up and interview me on that.
Okay. Next on our agenda is appointments to boards and commissions, and I did, earlier in the meeting, I wanted to say this, but I forgot, we did have an interested candidate in Ward Six position, and that was Mr. Kyle Brim, who's in our audience right now, and we did bring him in for an interview last night, so we had the opportunity to interview Kyle, and Kyle is the sole person on the ballot in November. Kyle's suggestion was taken, while I believe, by council that being represented. So, I'd like to make a motion at this point to appoint Kyle Brim to the Ward Six vacancy. Second by Council Galanese. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Council Noon?
Aye.
Council Galanese?
Aye.
Council Burrow?
Aye.
Council Peeler?
Aye.
Council Regan?
Nay.
Council Camera?
Nay.
Council Salamendra?
Nay.
Motion carried.
Welcome aboard, Kyle. Next, I need a motion to adjourn. Council, slow down, Council Noon, second by Council Peeler, all in favor?